I sometimes feel weirdly safe about.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Superior Town Council for Monday, August 25th, 2025. Can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call, Shannon.
Mayor Mark Laces.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jason Serbu.
Here.
Councilmember Heather Kraykraft.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Foster.
Here.
Councilmember Jen Cowish.
Here.
Councilmember Stephanie Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Neil Shaw.
Here.
Town manager Matt Magley.
Here.
Town attorney Nicholas Hartman.
Here.
All right, up next is item 3C, which is approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Uh, yeah, Mark, I'd like to, um... No, I'm on. I can't load up. Um, D, please.
7D?
Yes, please.
All right, we're gonna pull 7D. Um, I have a question for the town attorney. Um, I'm gonna recuse myself from the vote on the Silk Appointments. Do I need to recuse myself from the entire consent agenda or pull that off?
Those aren't consent, right? Why don't you just pull it off?
We'll pull it off.
Yeah.
We're pulling 7C and 7D. Any other changes? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, good. Motion from Councilmember Kraykraft.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Foster. All those in favor? Passes unanimously, and we are on to our council reports. 3D. Who would like to go first? Neil.
I'll start. Um, I've had really brief council reports. This one's also brief. I wanted to thank, um... Thank Mike for covering Dr. Cog. I was moving one kid into, uh, school, and next month he's covering Dr. Cog again for me because he's moving another kid into school. My only comment is with the recent Disc Golf event, I do want to bring this up at the work session. I feel like we had a work session topic on this back in 2019, and we, we had some questions. I don't know that those questions were answered in 2019. I think some, a lot of those questions have come back in terms of the costs to the town, what we're receiving in, in terms of revenue. I want to at least have that conversation again, um, and start it over. So that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Going down the road, Jen?
Sure, I'll go. Um, just a reminder, uh, this Sunday, the veterans group meets, so if you're, um, a veteran or veteran connected in any way, um, Sunday at four o'clock at the community center, we'll be meeting. Um, let's see. So, um, I feel like I have a very long list of events that I attended over the last couple of weeks. So I'm trying to pick the ones that are the most local and most important. Um, so we started a, uh, an adult coed rec league softball team this summer. It was our first in Superior, and I just wanted to share, um, just anecdotally from one of the business owners at Pat's Tap. They said that on those nights when we played, that business has increased five times. And so I, I, um, and they shared, um, not, not to speak for other restaurants in the area, but they, they shared that people were bringing in food from tequila mezcal and the Asian noodle hot... So it was just a, an impact economically that got people out having fun. Um, next year, we'll do it again in the summer, and I vouch the staff to look at doing fall ball also, so that we have like a longer season going into it. Cause all the adult, they all wanted to just keep playing. They didn't want the season to end. So I think that was a great thing, um, to have through the summer. The kids were out playing at the parks and, and none of us in our late 40s injured ourselves too badly. So, um, I was glad to, to say, well, someone's tooth got knocked out, actually. But she put it back and it, it held. So, um, I forgot about that. Never mind. Um, so, so we, we had a good time. It was a great, it was a lot of fun. And, and I'm very much looking forward to it. And, you know, the point of it was to get people out, but also to be an economic driver. And I think that it did what we hadn't intended, and I'm really glad to hear that. The Marshall Together folks hosted, uh, an event at Bambi Brewing on Sunday, yesterday. It was very well attended. It's always wonderful to be in the, the fire community. Again, it's one of those things that it's a terrible tragedy, but it's a club nobody wants to be a part of, but there's some really great people in it. And I, I just, being able to meet with them and then hearing from people in Louisville that just loved their time in Superior and still consider possibly moving to Superior and love seeing what the Superior Council's doing in terms of the fire recovery. And it just, it's just always really wonderful feedback to hear, um, from those folks. Also attended the, um, oh gosh, Consortium of Cities. Am I saying that right? Okay, I just jumped out of my brain. Um, we, we talked about disaster preparedness and had different, uh, cities regionally, different municipalities in Boulder County, sharing, um, kind of the work that they've been doing in terms of disaster preparedness. And, um, I was really happy to hear that while many of the communities are exploring or signing on to IGAs, uh, with Boulder County in terms of services and support, we've got this phenomenal disaster recovery manager, Allison James, who, um, has a lot of experience with FEMA and, um, basically recovering money for us. And she's been offering her help to the county, um, which has been fantastic because it, she, she's essentially saving us a ton of money in the work that she is doing. Kind of keeping us out of the IGA by her ser, her services and, and helping them with stuff. So I was, I didn't realize that. So, um, if she could just get a raise or something, it's probably a good idea. Um, and then I also attended, uh, in Boulder County. There was an event for the impacts of federal cuts, specifically, um, ICE, uh, behavior, how it could impact organizations in Boulder County. And so there was a panel of six, seven different, um, Latino-focused community organizations, um, sharing kind of impacts that they're dealing with. Um, and one of the things that I wanted to, to mention, so I'll, I'll be providing to anybody that wants it, a, a resource list of where you can donate, uh, cause these organizations are expecting big cuts, and these are people that take care of mental health, healthcare, um, housing, food, um, education support services. But specifically, one of the stories that stuck with me was, um, from Sister Carmen, which we have a really great relationship with in the fire recovery. And, um, they said that when the, the ICE rates started to increase in the spring, that they saw a huge drop in people coming for food. And it's because they're, they're learning and understanding more that like people are afraid to leave their homes. They don't want to go out and have, you know, be picked up, um, and have their kids come home from school to nobody there. And so it's just, this is a real, um, impact that's happening, um, in our community to folks that are just, um, losing out on resources they already needed. But also the domino effect of things that are happening because of these, these fears. And I know the chief, um, is gonna speak to some of this stuff later. But I just wanted to share that, you know, these organizations are expecting a big loss, and there's gonna be a, a big need for, if you're in a space where you want to help and you don't know what to do, there's gonna be a lot of need from local organizations that are serving this community, and I'm happy to share that information. So.
Thank you, Jen. Stephanie?
Um, just a couple of things. On the events front, just wanted to remind everybody that Chili Fest is coming up on Saturday, September 6th. Uh, it's from 2:00 to 6:00 PM in the community park. If you want VIP tickets, those are still for sale, so make sure to grab those. Um, and otherwise, hope to see everybody there, cause that's a really fun event. And then September 18th, which is a Thursday, from 5:30 to 8:00 PM in the community center, is this year's Taste of Nepal. The theme is Love is in Thin Air. So, uh, the first two people to ever get married on the top of Mount Everest are going to be speaking about their experience, which is super exciting. And then there's gonna be dancing and food and, um, a silent auction and all kinds of fun things. So if you haven't gotten your tickets, please do so. It should be a really great event. Um, all the funds from that event go to help our sister city. We are working on a project to help them build a more safe and, uh, healthy marketplace. Cause right now their marketplace is essentially on dirt. Um, when they go there every week to buy their food, they're, you know, walking through mud. And, and it's just, it's not a really, um, sanitary situation. So we're trying to help them with that. Um, and then last but not least, on the safety front, I was chatting with somebody after the park meeting, uh, this last week, and he was saying that a gentleman that lives next door to him had his house broken into. And before he could even get it out, I said, "Did they take his garage door open from the car?" And sure enough, they did. Um, this happens a lot. So, uh, just a reminder, and you hear it all the time at Chat with the Chief, but just a reminder, do not leave your garage door openers in your car if you're parking in the driveway, because it makes it very, very easy for people to get into your house. And, um, if you want to learn more about ways to stay safe, then please attend Chat with the Chief. It's got a wealth of information and that always comes up. And so, um, just a helpful hint for the community. That's it for me.
Thank you, Stephanie. Heather, Mike?
Thank you. Uh, happy football season, everyone. Um, it's here, so, uh, my favorite time of year. Um, just one thing I wanted to remind the community that our, um, RTD service, um, 228 does now have a route addition, not only downtown Superior, but you can also, um, be dropped off at the McCaslin Park and Ride. So for a lot of us that like to use that as your airport shuttle, um, that's another plus. Or obviously many routes from there. So I just wanted to make sure that the community was reminded of that. That's all I got.
Thanks, Heather. Nothing? Okay, Jason?
Uh, just one thing real quick. This Thursday, uh, the 28th, I will be at the community center at 10:00 AM to have a discussion on what 55-plus housing will look like for the town of Superior. It's just an informative talk. I'll talk about typology of houses, uh, as well as, um, the philosophy of living in place, which is also called aging in place or thriving in place. But basically how you can create opportunities in your existing home so you can age in place and not have to worry about necessarily moving and selling your home. The rest of the discussion will be on development of community, uh, that can bring in 55-plus housing for seniors. And I'm a senior, so kinda getting there. So, uh, please, if you're there at 10 o'clock on Thursday, uh, at the community center, it'd be great. I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
I got two things I forgot to mention. Sorry. One is an announcement tomorrow. Superior Pairings is a CAPS event over across the street in this new civic space. Six starts at 6:30. It's, I think, a great opportunity to kind of mix the symphony with, um, the ballet, the Boulder Ballet. So the Boulder Harmonic is a great event across the street, and then also in line with what Heather said, in addition to the 228 getting rerouted, they've added a bunch more FF2 pickups. Um, so, uh, twice or three times a year, RTD redoes its schedule, and they're taking feedback to try to get, you know, the, the level of service back to what it was pre-2019. Right now, at our current rate of growth on ridership on RTD relative to pre-pandemic, it'll take about 740 years to get back to the ridership that we had in 2019. So we got some ways to go. Uh, but nonetheless, they are adding back some more FF2 pickups, which if you go to Denver, it's the best way to get there, cause the last pickup is here and the next stop is Union Station. So there are only two. Now there's gonna be like seven, so.
They're bringing back the FF4 as well, right?
Yes. Yeah. So slow, steady with RTD. Um, but now you can take the 228 from across town to get to the, uh, the park and ride. So that's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Neil. Um, I was going to announce about the Superior Pairings, but for those of you who don't know, um, I'm gonna just read the description, cause it's really a, a unique event that CAPS is hosting tomorrow night at 6:30 at our brand new civic space in downtown Superior. CAPS has had this speaker series. This is the fourth of their five 2025 speaker series. And what, uh, tomorrow is, it's Superior Pairing Symphony of Motion, and it is featuring the Boulder Philharmonic and the Boulder Ballet. So they're going to have a string quartet and two guest dancers, uh, where we're gonna explore personal stories and the magic behind these transformative art forms. Join us as we step out of the traditional orchestra setting into an immersive, barrier-breaking experience that lifts the facade of stereotypical orchestral concert and highlights the theatrical aspects of ballet. So, I mean, this is just a really, uh, unique type of, uh, events. Certainly, we've never had anything like this before in Superior. So I wanted to give, uh, CAPS and our staff just a bunch of kudos for, for bringing these unique types of experiences to Superior. It's free. Go check it out. 6:30 PM tomorrow night. I'll see you there. Couple of things to report on. On, uh, last Wednesday, I attended the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport, uh, Open House, um, where they had, uh, updates on some construction that is going on at the airport over the, the coming months and years. Uh, they had some updates on their financial conditions as well as, uh, an update on kind of the recommended flight paths for, uh, the flight schools to take. Um, I think it was a, a good event for the airport to open themselves up to the community to come in and ask questions. I'm, I'm definitely appreciative for that, and I hope they continue to do that. Um, on Saturday, I attended the final summer concert series. Many thanks to Michaela and Allison, um, and the rest of town staff for pulling this off. It was just an incredible night. It was a beautiful evening. Uh, the, the downtown space in the plaza was absolutely packed. The music was great. Uh, the vibe was great. Food was, was amazing. It was just a, a really wonderful, um, kind of end to our, our summer concert series. And this is just another example of things, you know, if you look about 10 years ago, you know, what did, what did this town have? We used to have Chili Fest, and we had Fourth of July, not to minimize any of those, but now we have so many events, um, thanks to the, the hard work of, of Michaela and her team, um, to put those together. And it's just really turned this community into an even better place to live. So really appreciative for those events and keep up the good work. Chili Fest, Saturday, September 6th, 2:00 to 6:00 PM. Buy your tickets. I'll see you there. And that's all I've got. Town manager Magley.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so tonight and tomorrow night, there'll be construction at the Rock Creek Parkway-McCaslin intersection from 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM. So it'll be restricted movements, so just be aware of that. They're doing the final paving lift for that intersection. Try to get that project wrapped up. For the work session, we're gonna have a discussion about events, which will include the Sundance and other debrief of the Disc Golf as well. But if you have other topics, email them to me. Thanks.
All right. Town attorney?
Um, I actually do have one thing. I won't be at the next meeting. You'll be joined by Ms. Katie Vera, who is a person attorney from my office. She's the best. She's a close friend, too. Um, and I'll also be completely unavailable from the Friday prior to the Tuesday after that meeting. So if you need anything at all, please get ahold of me by Thursday, cause I will not exist until the following Tuesday. And that's all I got.
All right. Town clerk? Okay. We are on to, uh, public comment on our consent agenda presentations and non-agenda items. If you'd like to make public comment, uh, we've got a sign-in sheet here at the desk. Give us your first and last name and the city in which you reside. If you're participating via Zoom, please use the raise hand feature, and we'll call on you in the order in which we see your hands raised. We take public comments for five minutes per person. And with that, do we have anybody signed up?
Thank you and good evening. I'd like to... That might be better. Thank you. Um, so I am Melissa Munio. I am a Superior resident, and I am here to address the town and other decision-makers regarding Disc Golf and Purple Park. Uh, I'll be candid, I'm not a fan. This is my fourth time in the last 10 years addressing this body with the understanding that you guys kind of rotate in and out, and every couple of years I'm back again with my shtick. But, um, it's pretty important to me, and it, I'm gonna go into a lot of reasons why, and I know folks have been getting my emails. But I think it's important for me to also show up in person, so folks understand how passionate I and others are about this. And I'll begin by saying a few things around what I suspect are the general, uh, thoughts of NIMBYism or general hate towards the golf community. I don't, I don't possess either of those. Um, I can tell you from where I live, and my house backs to the park, the park is my daily neighbor. I don't have the same daily neighbor. I don't have the same barking dog. I have a rotation of people with various interests and using the park, most of which I'm genuinely delighted to see. I love watching people in the space. I love watching them use it. And I really just appreciate the life and, and the nature that the park provides to all of us. The only thing that sends me sideways is this, this golf tournament. Um, again, I'll go into it, but I just want folks to be really clear that I'm not the neighbor saying you can't do things in the park. We do plenty in the park, and I appreciate every aspect of that. This does not fit in that park for many reasons. Um, so before I get started, I'm a very visual person, and I want for folks for context to understand where a lot of the basis of my concern comes from in the discs themselves. So from my research online, a disc weighs approximately 200 grams, which is the equivalent of a can of soda. Disks at velocity when thrown go anywhere from 50 to 70 miles per hour. So just keep that visual in your head when you're, when you're looking at that park, you're in and out of there, or you just want to hang out in your backyard during this golf tournament, and you don't want to be told by the Parks Department, "Don't go in your yard if you're afraid to get hit by a disc." That's not an acceptable use for the park anytime it infringes on anything in my property, including trespassing. So primarily, when I came to visit your predecessors, it was predas, it was trespassing. Folks would be in and out of my yard, helping themselves to the discs. The discs would hit my house. So over the years, some mitigation efforts occurred, which involved putting the hole behind my neighbor's house to moving it to behind my house. Um, and, and some other things that I think might have been well-intended, but I just think the overall takeaway for the use of this space is not a good fit. So in all, you know, the, the other nature that this event brings, um, is this kind of exclusionary use of an outside entity to come in and use our parks while restricting it to ourselves, um, all under the lens or the argument of recreation or content for the community. I'm not a frisbee golfer. I golf occasionally for work events. I know what a golf course looks like. I have, I have some fun. Again, Purple Park is not a golf course. It's a park that we use on a regular basis. So are, are my main concerns, again, I'll reiterate, is, um, kind of the, the natural and regular use of the park and the deviation from that. There's the element of danger with these discs, the velocity. Um, again, some mitigation efforts, but in my book, it just doesn't belong there. And ultimately, the park belongs to the community and its residents. And anytime I see, um, anybody in an elected capacity or, uh, a governing capacity give preference to a group or an entity over the residents, I'm gonna have a, a problem with that, and that's why I'm gonna come and talk to you all. So, um, I want to talk a little bit about Purple Park and my research and my dialogue with many others, um, in the past decade. And it all started with a gentleman by the name of Jim Payne, who used to be the chair of the Pro Stat Committee. In my conversations with him, he indicated to me that while he chaired that, the Pro Stat Committee prior to 2017, that Disc Golf was actually addressed and discussed by the committee and ultimately recommended against. The reasons for recommending against boiled down to the definition of a passive park. So Purple Park is a passive park. It's not an active park. What's a passive park? Passive park is a place where folks walk, they sit, they birdwatch. Am I out of time?
You're at five minutes. If you can just wrap it up.
Okay, well, darn it. Um, so it's a passive park. Uh, it shouldn't be turned into an active park with competitive events. Let's talk about the numbers. This group is being charged, uh, upwards of $2,000 for closing the park down to the locals for a week. The normal rates would have been $2,200, $680. The group has proven that they can rent golf courses on their own, whether it's a frisbee golf or a regular golf course. Those go for about $7,500 to $10,000 a day, not a week. So again, this group is getting a cherry deal, and why do they keep coming back? Because they're getting a public park for a fraction of the cost that looks a lot like a golf course, and the superior taxpayers are paying for it. In addition, we're being asked to come and watch them use our park in a way that we cannot while we're being excluded from its very use. So they, there was a tournament, um, sponsored clinic, uh, back in 2021, uh, where eight folks registered. One was from Superior, and this year there was the same clinic offered for free to the residents. Three registered, one attended. And in, in whole, the actual participation for this event by the actual golfers that were hosting or, or sponsoring, if you will, um, have declined from 132 at its highest point down to 78 golfers. And, you know, my dialogue with the Parks Department and other leaders, there's definitely this push that there's support from the community for this event. But I would argue that there's not enough support in the community to infringe on my property and to infringe on my rights to my own park to be able to say we hosted 100 people from across the state that have an active use and know how to use an actual golf course. So why we're flipping, flipping the narrative and turning Purple Park into that is, is not the case. Again, common uses of the park are things like playdates, running, biking, walking, the egg hunt, Oktoberfest, the downhill mile, the Fourth of July parade. Uh, no other event presents a risk to other parkgoers and surrounding properties. No other event is approved for more than one day, and no other event restricts the use of the park to the local community for an outside interest. I'm not asking that they pay more. I'm asking that they use a golf course and let the park be a park for the rest of us to use. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Alanese?
Oh, thanks. Thank you. I am a Superior resident, but I'm also the executive director for the Chamber of Commerce. And most of the board may know this already. I also, sorry, have a cut on my tongue, so I have a lisp today, so I hope you can understand what I'm saying. But, um, I wanted to alert the board and the town and the residents that the, um, Boulder County Economic Vitality Grant has awarded the Superior Chamber, the first in Boulder County and the first in Colorado, um, the funds to partner and launch a new initiative program in support of, um, businesses and neurodivergent professionals. So we will be conducting through September, October, um, different neurodivergent training for a business. So if you're a business and you need to understand what kind of words you need to use, what, how to be inclusive, what kind of things do you need to offer? Or if you identify, or even if you don't identify as neurodivergent, we will offer, um, courses on communication, networking, executive function, and different things. And in a time when things are getting cut, this is kind of, um, a unique opportunity that we were given to launch this. We, of course, will be working with the Colorado Neurodiversity Chamber. They'll bring our experts in. We personally would not be teaching them. And so our goal right now is to get this out to all of Boulder County and to get this all out through Superior, because all of the courses and all of it will be taking place in Superior, and the first one is September 26th. We have more information on the Superior Chamber's website, but I just wanted to alert everyone. This is kind of an exciting new opportunity for us. It's just a way that we're showing we're not just kind of a network group, but we're actually building true resources for our community. But I will also make a plug for Chili Fest while I'm up here, specifically the VIP, uh, tent. The chamber works with Michaela and team, but we help run- The Chamber works with Michaela and team, but we help run the VIP tent as a way to be a fundraiser for us. So part of our money goes back to the community, and part goes to fund some of our resources. So in the VIP tent, we will have tacos and all different types of Mexican food, as well as tequila and Mexican beer poured hosted by Casa Gave. There'll be prizes. There'll be misters. There'll be a photo booth and shade. The rest of the event is going to be amazing, too, but it's a VIP. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Samuel Feldman. I live at 735 Josephine Way in downtown Superior. Recent resident here, loving it so far. There is a, I have a traffic concern in my neighborhood. It's a new build area. The way that the road is sort of designed impinges, so it basically goes from two lanes of traffic to have two lanes of traffic with parking on both sides to two lanes if there are no cars through a turn. And these town homes are quite tall, and there is, you know, there is a setback from the street side, but if you're moving too quickly, it essentially is a blind turn. And where this turn is, is very close to a dog park on the other side of my home. So a lot of people are walking there, a lot of people sometimes with animals. And I and some neighbors have had some close calls recently where there have been a lot of people parking in this turn, essentially taking this tight two-lane down to a one-lane. And especially with a relatively active construction zone nearby and in the area, it just creates a lot of close calls and hazards. And I was just kind of wondering what I could do to address this.
Well, this is a good first step. So thanks for bringing it to our attention. We have a Traffic and Safety Committee and then also our Public Works Department, but bringing this to our attention, we'll have the Town Manager make sure that our Public Works Director looks into it and sees if there's any changes that need to be made.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Debbie Yates. Mic's back there. I don't want to talk. I'll come with you. Mike and Debbie Yates, Coal Creek Crossing in Superior. I appreciate and support the beauty of the town of Superior landscaping and the strong maintenance of our parks. The strong visual appeal adds to the desirability of the town of Superior, and as a community, we all benefit from these amenities. Coal Creek Crossing landscaping adds to the beauty of the town. In addition, the addition of a Class 1 landscaping fee should not be applied to the same across all areas of town and not to Coal Creek Crossing. What is the landscape benefit to Coal Creek Crossing from this monthly landscape tax? Founder's Park maintenance does not come from the town budget. A total, it comes from the SMID fund. Coal Creek Crossing provides the landscaping, water, weeding of the town-owned areas along Coal Creek Drive from Fifth Avenue to 76th Avenue. This is a total of four blocks. As you may not be aware, Coal Creek Crossing has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to replace fencing with metal, hundreds of trees, bushes, grasses after the fire recovery, and to beautify and maintain the walking paths in our areas that outside residents do use, and thousands of volunteer hours. Coal Creek Crossing recently paid to repave the middle path walking, the middle walking path with crusher fine stone. This path is used by all surrounding neighbors, and we also maintain and replace any parkway trees, and we water those trees out of our budget. Each year, Coal Creek Crossing pays up to $10,000 to follow wildfire protection protocols. This includes mowing six acres of native tall grasses, removing the fitzr bushes, and fire shrubs, following the resistant plant material guidelines by the county of Boulder. We had extensive destruction from the Marshall Fire, as you all know. As a result of the great cost of this fire recovery, we needed to raise our HOA dues substantially, and we approved numerous large special assessments. We received no help from the town or FEMA after the wildfire for all this landscape recovery. And yet, you propose Coal Creek Crossing pay for landscaping in other areas of the town? That doesn't really happen. The original Coal Creek Crossing final development plan did not include this landscape tax in the approval for building. Legally, does the town, the town even have the ability to tax it now? According to the Town One Landscape Fee Map, Coal Creek Crossing is not included. That's this. I'm sure you guys know this. And one of the other things that's kind of interesting, when you look at this, here's my neighborhood and this little tiny house up here with no green around it. And if you look at this, all of this is that open space that when you're talking about that landscape fee. The only thing that is up by us is Founder's Park, which is the orange under SMID, and open space behind us, which, by the way, we mow those grasses every fall, our landscape company does. So we want to do as much fire protection around our neighborhood as we can. The proposal is for Coal Creek Crossing being taxed to cover the landscaping areas across the town, not downtown, despite our paying substantial HOA fees to maintain common areas used by many residents. A fee should be tied to a measured benefit. Otherwise, it is taxation without representation. The chart in the meeting packet estimates the fee to Coal Creek Crossing residents to be, in the year 2026 and five years, $50 a month or $600 a year. Of course, this is added to all our HOA fees also. This is the lowest tier amount that you see in this chart that you guys sent out, single family down in here. Next year, it will be $42.24. This is the lowest tier amount. And for this amount of money, which it will be according to this little chart that you sent out to everybody in the packet, it will be up to approximately $50 a month or $600 a year for this general landscape fund. For this amount of money, other areas of town in Superior are getting a whole lot more landscaping benefit than Coal Creek Crossing. If the town does leave this landscape tax, that'd be this landscape tax, and needs to assume all the common area landscaping in the community of Coal Creek Crossing, and I can tell you that expense is substantial. If the town feels the financial need to go forward with this tax, it should be put forth as a townwide voter referendum for approval and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? All right. We've got Matthew Horton on Zoom.
So sorry, this is Matt and Michelle.
All right, we can hear you.
Sorry, a little bit of a mess there. Just making sure you can hear us. My apologies very much. Okay. Hi, how are you guys?
We are well.
All right. Thank you. And apologies for that delay there. Good evening to the council. I'm Michelle Horton. This is my husband, Matt. We've both been residents of Superior since 1997. And we want to thank you for your ear this evening. In particular, I'm talking for both of us, but I wanted to talk to you about the issues that the prior speaker did. And I want to thank you, though, for taking the steps to try to rectify the issues that have come up regarding obligations that the town took on after the consolidation of the Metro Districts 2 and 3 in the early 2000s. Those Metro Districts were part of the establishment of what is now known as the Rock Creek portion of Superior. Tonight, you'll be hearing from an outside consultant on scenarios that you asked the Town Manager and Finance Director for regarding what is known as a landscape fee around the town, and this fee is collected in the monthly water bill. Because not everyone has lived in Rock Creek or Superior for as long as many others, I wanted to make sure that all town residents know that the only reason the landscape fee exists is because the town was able to start collecting what Rock Creek residents paid to the Metro Districts way back in 2004. This was all after a townwide public vote the prior year to change how the debt the town took on was paid back since the Rock Creek building was completed. When it was the Metro Districts 2 and 3, the services that Rock Creek received via this fee, along with a different tax rate, went towards all of the maintenance and upkeep of the open landscape, all parks, monuments, structures, paths, exterior fencing, maintenance, pools, streets, tennis courts, programs at the facilities, and so forth. The town said at the time of the public vote in 2003 that the services provided under the Metro Districts would never change, and that the cohesiveness that was defined by the town in the development proposal for Rock Creek would continue to be upheld. This was in exchange for Rock Creek opening up what had been up until that point private parks, pools, and other services to the town, and that's just trying to simplify it. There was benefits for everybody. I don't speak alone when I am encouraging the council to remember the commitments to their community and to only consider implementing a landscape fee that continues to maintain the obligations that the town requested to take on. Maintaining your promises and a commitment is the bedrock of maintaining trust and confidence amongst the community that you serve. While taking on how to apply this fee across the town as you're proposing, we do all have to remember how every, each and every different neighborhood benefits and the particular nuances that are now being brought forward. So maybe there needs to be more than three categories. But regardless, for those that have been paying for this fee since before the town took it on, absolutely the fee adjustments that should have been made over the years to the landscape fee haven't been done consistently. And the way that the spending for the services was tracked by the town were messy at best. But with the steps that the council is currently taking, the path forward is very cohesive and clear, and you're trying to set the community up for continued cohesive and strong presence long into the future. And we thank you for that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else on Zoom like to give a public comment? Now's the time. Raise your hand. All right, seeing none. Public comment is closed. And we are moving on to item number four, which is our Advisory Committee interviews for our Advisory Committee on Environmental Sustainability. And we've got Bridgette Ross.
That's correct.
Who's our applicant? Do we have Bridgette?
Did you see anybody on Zoom?
I don't.
No. I didn't get notice that she was going to be on Zoom, but.
All right, well.
We'll reach out to reschedule if we need to.
Moving right along. We're on to our presentations for tonight, and we're starting off with item 6A, which is our e-bikes discussion. And we've got Sergeant Solomon here tonight.
Thanks, Mary. I want to thank Sergeant Solomon for coming to the meeting to have this discussion with the council regarding the use of e-bikes in town and answer any questions that the council might have for him as far as enforcement goes and the issue in general.
So I think I'll start us off. Welcome. Good evening. But start us off really with, we all know this, this is a huge problem, right? It's a huge problem, not only in the town of Superior, but across the state. These e-bikes have really exploded into a market that was not really foreseen. And now we're having to backtrack and figure out how are we going to take care of this. So things that the Sheriff's Office is doing is working with our communications team and putting out more social media and education. I think that's one of the biggest things lacking in any community, right? As parents are buying these stage-two, stage-three bicycles and have no idea how fast they go, what the rules of the roads are, things like that. So it's become kind of willy-nilly. So I think number one is education is very key. I had a, one of the, one of the community events, we had discussions about, hey, does anybody else have any great ideas? And one of them came out of it, which was a great idea, was where we can go to the schools with tags from the Sheriff's Office and actually put them on level-one, level-two, level-three bikes and for education purposes. Say, hey, just so you know, this is a level-three. This can't be ridden on the paths, or it can't be, you know, it has to be ridden on the street. You have to be above the age of 16 and be wearing a helmet, things like that. So I think that that's a great idea that we're working on getting implemented so that we can start doing some education. I'm working with the schools to figure out and navigate that, whether we do flyers that go home with the students or, you know, some type of education class or something like that. Of course, we're going to take huge advantage of the bike-to-work event days where we can do some education. So currently, some of the roadblocks that we have is probably the lack of an ordinance so that parents really understand and know the rules. So if there was an ordinance that was clear of this is a, this is a stage-one bicycle, here are the rules, here's where it's allowed to be, and just like other towns, you know, Louisville just passed their ordinance with the 15 miles an hour, and stuff like that would be really helpful for us to be able to enforce. There's some state laws when it comes to, you know, some of the higher-level bikes. But when it comes down to, hey, can you ride this stage-one bicycle on a bike path? Can you ride a stage-two on a sidewalk? We don't have those answers in the town, and so that would be really helpful for us for enforcement. So what we've been doing is we've been very proactive as much as we can, talking to the kids, especially this summer. They would congregate at Safeway, Community Park, that type of thing. We had different interactions with the kids. Some of them were positive, and some of them were negative, where they don't want to talk to you, leave me alone, you're a bad man, and take off on their bike. But really tried to use this as an opportunity to educate them over the summer, because we knew it was going to be that much worse once school starts. I was just talking to the sheriff today, and he lives off Dillon Road, and he's watching these bikes go 20 miles an hour, and there's a big bump, I guess, in front of his house. And he's watching kids just about biff it every single day. And the problem is, these kids are going to get hurt. We've had three different accidents related to the e-bikes. One was on 88th where kids were crossing. They didn't use the pedestrian crossing and thought, hey, I can go 20 miles an hour across. The people, the first person stopped, luckily avoided the kids. The car behind him didn't stop and hit that person. Luckily, no kids were injured. There were two others. Both were, the bicyclists were not paying attention, and there was a stopped car on the side of the road and ran into the back of it. So it's becoming a bigger problem, right? And how do we, how do we get ahead of this, right? It's very difficult. It's very challenging. Like I talked about, education is number one, but if we could do that education with a municipal ordinance on the bicycles, that would really help us out. You know, I've heard some things about, hey, we'd really, you guys have been giving warnings and things like that, especially people riding, like in Community Park on Williams Field, hey, look, there's no bikes allowed here, you know, that type of thing. But really tried to start off with step up with the enforcement. You know, first piece is education. We can only educate for so long, and if you do nothing about it, you're not going to change the behavior. So we're really looking at this as an opportunity to start enforcement, but it would be helpful for us to have an ordinance that we could really enforce. So I kind of want to open this up to questions for me and our staff, and if you guys have other ideas of how we can tackle this. Nick is very well-versed in this as well, so I'm sure he has a lot to say about the topic.
I'll start off. Thanks for being here tonight, and really appreciate addressing this, this subject. When we talked about this back in 2024, like our discussion at that point was, was limited entirely to the stage-one, stage-two, stage-three bikes, and we didn't talk about e-motocycles at all. And the communication that the town sent out in early August out to the community via e-blast is really the first time that I'd seen kind of reference to e-motorcycle and any of our correspondence, really any kind of reference to it in general. And the e-motocycles are, in my opinion, the, the main problem. I'm totally supportive of getting you whatever ordinance you need to make sure that our code is giving you all the tools to keep everybody safe. But on the e-motorcycle thing, and I think you kind of hinted at this with your comment, you said that, you know, those already are covered by state law. And the way, the way that I look at this issue right now is we have a lot of parents that are buying kids e-motocycles that they don't know what they're buying them. They think they're buying them an e-bike, but they're buying them an e-motorcycle. And you need to be 16, you need to be licensed, you need tags, you need registration, insurance to operate these things. But it's the Wild West right now, and people are just operating, you know, riding them. And it would be the equivalent of like if I bought a Harley-Davidson for my 13-year-old boy and allowed him boy and allowed him to just ride it around town, like everybody would think I was nuts if I did something like that. But the e-motocycles, the equivalent, you know, giving them the keys to my car, same thing, you know, you need license, registration, insurance, all that, you know? And, and the point is that like with the e-motocycles, the, the kids, they don't know the, the rules of the road. They've never taken driver's ed. Like I don't necessarily fault the kids, I fault the parents for buying them a, a, a device that they can't operate safely because they've, they haven't gotten red, you know, driver's ed in, in school, they haven't taken the 50 hours of, of, of lessons. So, you know, they don't know, how long do I need to stop at a stop sign? How long do I need to stop at a red light before I can make a right? You know, when can I cross on a pedestrian crosswalk? When can I? And, and that's the problem, right? So like we've got these kids with these, these tools that they're not, they're not able to operate legally under state law right now. So my question for you is, what do we do with those, those devices where we, I don't think we necessarily need an ordinance, an additional ordinance to address the ones that are already in violation of state law?
Right. So, so I think it, when it comes in reference to the e-bikes, you're exactly right, right? They are a motor vehicle, they're going 40 miles an hour, these people need a driver's license to be able to operate these things. I had an interesting conversation with a parent that was surprised that their kid wasn't allowed to ride the dirt bike on the road, thought it was perfectly acceptable until I brought up the point, just like you did, well, would you hand your 14-year-old the keys to your car? Well, absolutely not. Well, what's the difference? And now the difference is you're putting your kid in more jeopardy of getting hurt. A car is a lot safer than this dirt bike. So I think the time for education, education needs to continue and it needs to be especially education towards the parents. But I think the time for enforcement is now, right? That we need to start enforcing these and not educating and getting these kids held accountable for not riding the bikes. That word will spread rapidly. The difficult part it though is truly the enforcement. That if I've got a kid on an e-motorcycle riding down a bike path, doing 40 miles an hour, I know it should not be on the bike path. It's a motor vehicle, it's not allowed on there, so we've already got an ordinance stating that. How am I going to go after them, right? And are they going to stop? Is that going to endanger public? If I, we've, we drive the paths all the time, especially at night, typically not during the day, but nighttime, summer, we're traveling the paths at a slow rate of pace. I loved when I worked night shift and we were on, you had a nice full moon, you're driving the path with your lights off. It was amazing the things that you caught these teenagers doing in the middle of the night. But, but the last thing I want to do is I want to hop on a bike path and try and chase one of these kids down and endanger everybody else that's, you know, trying to recreate on those paths. So it's, it's definitely a very big challenge to say, how do we then enforce it? Do we have the staffing to get, okay, we're going to get our own e-motocycles and, you know, train up the staff and then with lights and sirens and chase them down? You know, you can, you can see the challenge. So I think that yes, enforcement, especially on the roads, right? That's a little bit easier as long as they stop. Because a lot of times I've, we've tried to stop these kids, they have no idea what to do, they don't know the rules of the road. And so you try and stop them and you're following lights and siren and yelling at them over the PA system, say, pull over to the right. They're bebopping to their music with under their headphones, they have no idea that we're even trying to stop. So, so it's definitely a challenge, but I think it's something that we need to recognize the fact that enough, enough of the warnings and let's start issuing the summons where we can issue those to get that education, because that word will spread.
What, what do you do if you find a car or a motorcycle in the parking lot of Safeway or Target without tags? Can you do anything?
Oh, private property.
So if it's on a public road, you can?
Yes.
If it's parked in community park, you can?
Yes. So if it's on a public roadway, then we can enforce that and say, hey, this shouldn't be parked here, it's not legally registered, that type of thing. But when it's on, you know, in Target and Safeway's parking lot, that's private property. If Safeway says, I don't want this unregistered vehicle in my lot, they can then call a tow company and have it.
What about a school?
School's private property.
Can we work with the school to get access for that?
Yeah.
Because I think specifically, you know, standing outside, you know, Mohai, well, Mohai's Louisville, but, you know, SES or Eldo, and you'll see the bikers come in and if they park on campus, you know, then I think working with BVSD might be an option.
And that's one of the big things, right? Is working with the schools. We've got great relationships with the safety advocates that are there and really working with them and partnering with them and not trying to work against them. Mohai's a little bit different because it's in Louisville. I'd love to partner with Louisville and I haven't had the opportunity yet to start those conversations of, hey, what are you guys doing? Especially now that they got their new ordinance in, what are you guys going to do? And let's work together and, and be on the same page so that we can really educate these kiddos consistently.
On the education front, and this might be a Nick question, but can we license them? And as a part of that licensing, they don't get a license until they and their parents go to a class, a number of classes to where they basically learn the rules of the road, what you're allowed to do, what not to do. I mean, I imagine you have to take classes and pass a test to have a driver's license. So can we do something similar for bikes and then they have that license on their bicycle?
I think that's very, that becomes very challenging, right? For a number of reasons. I think it's a, it's an interesting way to try and tackle the problem, but it's challenging in other ways. I think that you'll get the majority of people that the parents are going to be like, well, we're not going to license you or the bike because that's going to cost us extra money. And I like the convenience of you being able to ride the community park and me not having you, to take you to soccer practice, to baseball practice, to whatever. And then comes the effect of how do you fund that and how do you then staff it? So at 10 o'clock at night, I get a kid that says, oh, I, I have a license, I just don't have it with me, or my sticker fell off of my bike. Who do I call at 10 o'clock at night, right? To go, hey, is this person really registered or are they not? Do I give them a ticket? Do I not? You know, that type of thing. So I think it becomes very challenging. Nick and I have had conversations, I'm sorry, estimate put on this as well.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of practical issues that, you know, Sergeant Solomon laid out about registering e-bikes. I don't think you can register low-power scooters because the state already registers them, so that's probably a preemption issue. So you're really only talking about bikes anyway. And I think, you know, yeah, I mean, you probably could, you could register bikes. Like I think the city of Boulder registers bikes. But I'm not, I'm not really sure that the value is there about the, you know, the issues you want to solve from charging a kid $5 to register his bike or something like that.
Can, trying to figure out a way to like force education and parents to be part of that conversation, because I think that's almost more important than the kids being a part of it, so the parents realize the repercussions. I mean, I was at, and not a stoplight, it was over by Safeway, but leaving the stoplight. So it's not that situation with the motorcycles where if you're stopped, then they're allowed to go in between. Everybody was already moving and, and had been moving, so we were, you know, already reaching higher speeds. And this kid without a helmet comes flying in between all the cars to beat us all. And I was, it scared the heck out of me. Because I was like, oh my God, if I was trying to switch lanes, I would not have seen you or expected a bicycle to be in between cars while we're all moving. And so I don't, it's just, like you said, it's a matter of time, so.
It is, and that's the unfortunate part, right? That, that it's going to take an unfortunate accident for some people to open their eyes and go, oh yeah, maybe I shouldn't let my kid ride that bike anymore, this is dangerous.
Yeah.
I think at a minimum, we, we need to get on a really strong communications campaign, you know, additional emails going out to the community, let's put an article in the Superior Sentinel, put an article in the magazine, you know, just get the word out regularly and often, because I, I, the, the parents are buying these things on Amazon and, you know, all, you know, various, various websites where you can get, you know, Timu and all that. And they don't know what they're buying. They just, their kids are doing the research for them, saying, hey, this is what I want for Christmas, then loan hold this motorcycle shows up that the parents don't understand what they just bought for their kids. They think it's just an e-bike. They think an e-bike is an e-bike.
I totally support the additional effort to, to provide education, but would it be worth adding this to our September work session as discussing what an ordinance might look like and what the parameters of that might be or, so that sheriff's department can have some more tools in their toolbox?
Sure.
I, I have a question for how much the police would engage with the schools in terms of some sort of incentive program versus the punishment side of it? Like a special parking area for class three bikes if you're over 16 and you've done whatever the course is that you get to park right in front of the high school or whatever, you know, for the middle school, a class two or class one parking if you've gone through whatever the training. Like I think there's, there's things there with the school that are going to be more attractive than just the punitive side of it for the kids. And I really don't see how you guys, there's three of you, I mean, I, I don't see how you're going to wrangle all of these kids that are out here on the bike. So more of, like how much can, can the police work with the schools or is it going to have to be driven by this, by the schools? Or is this something that you, you see a, a task force on this or like what is, you know, what does that look like?
I see us working jointly with the schools. Like I said, we've got a great relationship with them and other ideas and other things that we've had to work on them with have worked really well. And so I think the, that working together with them, I think we can come up with some ideas. I think it's very creative thinking to come up with stuff of, hey, how, how, how can we incentivize it versus how can we just do the enforcement? So I think, you know, I'll continue working with El Dorado K through eight, that's our biggest offender, if you'll call it, Superior Elementary, not quite as much, because, you know, those kids are too little to be riding a bike that goes 20 miles an hour, they can barely pedal themselves. So, you know, I will commit to continuing to work with them and come up with creative solutions like that for rewards versus just punishment.
I, I'm on the school accountability committee for Superior Elementary, so I imagine the other schools have similar, and so just would be open to meeting with you guys and, and the different schools on kind of brainstorming on what the incentive structure could look like for them.
Yeah.
Targeting like next spring, I mean, we're going into the winter, so I think some of this is going to curb because they're not going to be out riding the bikes as much.
Everybody's getting it for Christmas.
No.
No, there's a wave coming.
Well, then we should get the education to the parents out there before they start buying the.
No, we need to.
Studies to come available for these e-motocycles.
No, the, the problem is that, that this is the new shiny cool thing for the kids, right? So, so there's also that, oh, well, you know, this kid has it and this kid has it, and then the kid that doesn't have it now wants it, right? So it's, it is snowballing. So, you know, this time next year, we're going to have double the amount, triple the amount of bikes on, on the road if we don't do something about it.
I'm curious though, because the tax rebates have ended, right? So there's this huge push for the e-vehicles and that has gotten less, right? Like.
All the, as far as I understand, those don't end until January. So buying an electric lawnmower, buying an electric bicycle, all that stuff, you still get the incentives until January of next year.
All right, so we will work on an ordinance and then separately work on some additional communications to go out to the community. And as you're talking to your friends and neighbors, if anybody's looking to buy an e-motorcycle for their child that's below the age of 16 and unlicensed, don't do it.
Agreed.
Let me just add some stats, because I know we've been talking a lot about e-motocycles, but I think it's also the scooters. So UCLA did a study in 2020, you know, just as a campus, they had 249 patients in the ER, 10.8 of them, 10.8% were less than eight years old, 4% wore a helmet. Most common injuries, 31% were fractures, 40% had head injuries, 28% had soft tissue injuries. And of the 249, 15, 15 were admitted to the hospital, to, to the ICU, right? So these are just scooters and we're talking about motorcycles, which are just like that much higher. So it goes back and the problem is we as adults don't model good behavior because we don't wear helmets, there's no helmet law on motorcycles. There's a whole host of reasons why we don't have a helmet law in Colorado anymore, but the problem is going to be starting from that. Like I don't see that guy wearing a motorcycle on his Harley. So, you know, we got to remember to model good behavior and I'm Exhibit A, I have an electric scooter, I don't wear a helmet, but I am going to start now. And again, it's not just about that because I'm smarter than everybody else on their bikes. But the point is, the, the bad behavior is just, you know, as we model bad behavior, it, it just follows from there, especially these kids going short distances. Because the other reason why these bikes are becoming more prolific is RTD, I'm sorry, BVSD has ended most of the bus routes. So kids have got to get to school, the traffic in front of the schools is a nightmare, especially on snow days. So if we want our kids to get there, let's get, let them get there safely and model the right behavior.
Can we have like a custom helmet event? Where you like paint your helmet or?
Oh, there you go.
I don't know. That's what we do with motorcycles.
Have an artist come in and decorate your helmet.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that'll get them there.
All right.
All right. Anything else for me?
We're going to talk about Flock cameras?
We can.
Okay.
Flock.
I know this isn't on the agenda, but it's been in the news and other, other communities have been dealing with the contracts that they have with the Flock camera operators and just wanted to get the sheriff's office's perspective on how the Flock cameras are working and then the privacy issues that are being raised in terms of how it's being shared with law enforcement agencies, including but not limited to ICE. And, you know, that's one of the reasons why Louisville, for example, just discontinued their relationship with, with Flock. So anything you can share on that?
Yeah, absolutely. And we've, you know, we've been looking at this pretty hard ever since kind of everything broke, right? With Loveland and, you know, how are we dealing with it and making sure we're doing everything on board? I have, we've received some questions from community members, so I apologize, I just want to make sure I don't misquote anything, so I will be looking down, looking at my notes, make sure. So when it comes to data sharing, we share the data with other law enforcement agencies to support active investigations, which is consistent with Colorado law and our policies. Data sharing is intended for legitimate public safety purposes such as locating missing persons, investigating serious crimes or identity theft suspects. One thing that you first mentioned about Flock is, you know, what has it done for the community and is it a good tool for us? I can tell you it's a phenomenal tool for the sheriff's office and for a law enforcement agencies across the United States. Just as simple as we had a hit and run in Superior where a lady had hit a Vargas employee on a lawnmower crossing Rock Creek or crossing Colton, hit him, she stopped for a minute, are you okay? Of course, he kind of brushed himself off, oh, I'm fine, and she didn't know what to do and left. Well, because of Flock, we were able to, we got a brief description of the car, was able to look at the Flock cameras and say, look, there's no damage on this car that is very, that was described when it came into Superior and when it left Superior, it had visible damage right wherever the witness is sat. So we were able to get the plate, contact the person and hold that person accountable. That's a very small, minute crime compared to some of the things that Flock has done for us with the sheriff's office. The flagstaff homicide would have never been solved if we didn't have Flock. We had no witnesses, we had no nothing, all we had was a timeframe and the Flock cameras that picked up the cars going up and down, we were able to see who was there, what happened, start investigating it, and it 100% solved the crime that has been, that would have gone, in my opinion, unsolved. So Flock is used by the deputies probably almost on a daily basis for some type of crime. It could be a shoplifting in Superior. Say they left Target, Target knew they hopped in a white Toyota. So we're looking for white Toyotas that are leaving that area at that appropriate time, who are they registered to? Okay, that doesn't even come close to the description of the person that was in the car, you know, that type of thing. So it's been, it's, it's a, it's a tool that I really hope never goes away because it really helps the safety of the community and the safety of the people for us to be able to solve some of these crimes. As far as oversight and safeguards that the sheriff's office have, we have multiple policies. Our policy 217 and OP 607 basically govern the use of information and protected information and ALPR technology and how we, how we use it. We strictly limit the retention and access of the ALPR data to only sworn BCSO personnel, so we're not just sharing it with anybody, records doesn't have access to it. It's really, this is for law enforcement purposes. And all the data is deleted after 30 days. The only exception to that is if we have it, something identified that's involved in a crime that's ongoing, we will then save that data so that we can use it in court or, you know, whatever we need to for further investigation. But all regular data is deleted after 30 days, so we don't retain anything after that unless... But all regular data is deleted after 30 days, so we don't retain anything after that unless it's under an active investigation. We're fully compliant with Colorado's protections, especially when it comes to immigration enforcement, including restrictions on disclosure, use of the ALPR data for immigration enforcement Current agreements, the town uses the, town of Superior, or sheriff's office uses Flock in the town of Superior for law enforcement purposes. These devices capture like pictures of license plates and the vehicle, but not the people that are in the vehicle. So when it comes to privacy concerns, right, they don't want to know that, well, say husband is supposed to be going to their friend's house and Jane is now in the front seat of husband's car, but his wife doesn't know that, right? We don't know who's in the car. It is strictly a license plate, picture of the car, possibly identifying, identifying marks on the car, a bumper sticker or, you know, a headache rack or whatever. When it comes to federal access, to date, no federal agencies have requested or received direct access to the Superior local Flock cameras for any known immigration-related purposes. Sheriff's Office has been reevaluating its use of the Flock system, considering the recent changes in Colorado law and Flock technology. For example, Flock recently implemented a new search filter designated to remove local cameras from searches performed for immigration and deportation purposes. So Flock is taking some proactive steps into saying, "Look, we need to conform with Colorado law as well, not just the agencies that are using it, and so how are we gonna protect that?" I just heard today from Flock that they have, they had an MOU with Border Patrol and they no longer, they canceled that MOU. It's good and bad, right? We want privacy, we want these tools to be used for the right reasons. The unfortunate part of canceling a tool like that for Border Patrol is Border Patrol is not just about immigration. They just solved a huge sex trafficking ring out of, out of Mexico because of Flock cameras. Now it won't be able to be used for that, or the fentanyl that's coming into this United States. Now we can't use the Flock cameras for that anymore. So there's a good and bad, and you want it to be used for the right reasons, but now Border Patrol has zero access. So me saying that is really trying to show that Flock and everybody is doing everything we can, that these cameras are used for the right reason and not for immigration purposes. We got asked about community engagement, you know, we want to be transparent and all that. I, again, would invite anybody to chat with the chief. I talked about Flock cameras last Saturday, you know, chat with the chief about what we're using them for. It's an open forum, so people can come up and ask questions. If they don't want to ask them in public, I stick around afterwards so that people can then ask their question in private and, and get, get answered. We want to be as transparent as possible. But what I can tell you is, we're not sharing this with federal for immigration status whatsoever. When it comes to, you know, privacy and privacy concerns is a huge topic, right? But you think about, if you have a cell phone on you, I wouldn't worry about the cameras that are watching you. Your credit cards, everything. Let's talk about a product in here tonight, about anything, pick a product. Let's all talk about it, go home, an hour later, get on Facebook, and that product will be on your phone as an advertisement. Privacy, there is no privacy anymore. But what I can tell you is the stuff that we're using this information for is for law enforcement purposes, not to invade anybody's privacy.
Thank you for that. Do you have any questions?
I'll just add that I had the privilege of going on a ride along with a couple of your deputies a couple of months ago, and they actually used the Flock camera because they got an alert that there was a stolen vehicle driving through Superior. And so in real time, the deputy was able to start driving to figure out where is this vehicle now in Superior. Unfortunately, we weren't able to find the vehicle, but within a matter of, I think, two minutes, the deputy was looking for that vehicle, that stolen vehicle driving through Superior. So I think it is a really important technology.
It really is. You know, people, if somebody's coming into Superior with a stolen car, do you think they're here to do some shopping at Target legitimately? Probably not. So it's, it, I, I can't talk highly enough about how good of a tool this is.
Well, I appreciate the update and the community appreciates the transparency. As the sheriff's office goes through the, the review as to, you know, the assessment of, of Flock cameras, if something changes, please let us know and give us your recommendation. But, you know, from, from my perspective, I certainly see the value in the Flock camera system for law, for law enforcement purposes, and that's why the town has supported the installation of them in appropriate places. So keep us posted and we appreciate your service.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we are on to item 6B. How are we doing? Do we need a break or? We're going, okay. Item 6B, which is our landscape fee rate study.
Thanks, Mayor. Jeff Stone is gonna introduce this item for council tonight.
Mayor and council, back when we did the 2025 budget discussion, the landscape fee was brought up and a rate study was discussed. And so tonight, Maria Ostrom is here. She was selected through an RFP process to do the four scenarios that were discussed of no fence maintenance, fence maintenance split between all payers, fence maintenance cost included, split by Rock Creek residents, and then fence maintenance cost split between properties with fence for that. So that is what Maria will be going over. Maria's got over 25 years of experience in state and local governments. She's been a finance director and done plenty of rate study analysis as well as other different types of modeling for different rates. So I will turn it over to Maria and she can go through her presentation after I pull it up. There we go.
All right. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Council. It's good to be here. Jeff gave a great introduction. I'll make sure I can operate this. Jeff, how do I get it to go down one?
You can just click, roll down.
Roll down and click. Okay. All right. You might have to help me again, I'm sorry.
You're good. Just use the roller.
Roller, okay.
Or you can use the.
Then click the roller.
Yeah, you can just scroll it over.
Okay.
Just roll down, sorry.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Bit of a techno boob here. Okay, so we are gonna talk about the landscape fee fund and the, the, the task that I was asked to do for the town. But first, let's talk about the purpose of the landscape fee fund. So it serves over 5,800 residential units in your community, three different types, single-family detached, attached, and then of course multifamily. Provides landscape maintenance throughout the community for shared community spaces. And it is accomplished through a bill that goes to monthly residents, a fee that's assessed to, to residents monthly by those different unit types. Now, the purpose of the fee is simply to recoup, recoup the cost of this landscape maintenance and it, it's to meet service level demands and contribute to this thriving community. The other thing it does is it also provides a way for your leadership team to ensure that there's long-term solvency here, that revenue is matching expenses over time. So some of the objectives in preparing this landscape rate model first was to create a 10-year picture, make sure that over the course of 10 years, revenues could meet expenses, calculate the rate per unit, three different unit types, to recover the costs, maintain the fund balance reserve. This is a reserve target that the council has set by policy, and these, these different scenarios do that. And we'll talk about that fund balance reserve in just a minute here and, and show a picture of it. There were four different rate scenarios that we ran per your direction. The first one is no fence maintenance, so status quo, basically. The second one is add fence maintenance and have all units cover the cost of the fence maintenance. The third scenario is add fence maintenance, but Rock Creek, single-family detached units cover the fence maintenance. And the fourth scenario is have the fence maintenance, but only those units in Rock Creek, 51% of the units that have that exterior fence backing up to those publicly shared spaces, those would cover the maintenance.
And just for purposes of clarification for the record, when we talk about fence maintenance in general, we're talking about the Rock Creek neighborhood's fences, not other fences in town.
Correct.
That is correct.
Correct. Yes, thank you for that clarification, Mayor. Okay. So we wanted to make sure with, in running these scenarios and preparing them for you, we needed to be able to, to let you know what, what was this rate, what would the rate look like every year to make sure that we are maintaining revenue sufficient to cover these expenses and then also meet the council reserve. Now, per your policy, you have a reserve target of a minimum of 10% of that year's expenses and a maximum of 12, 25%. So as long as the fund balance reserve is staying in that, that range, it meets your policy, you're good. This is a picture of revenue expenses by year for the 10 years. This is scenario number two. Remember, scenario number two is fence maintenance is covered by all units. But if you were to look at this graph for any one of the four scenarios, you would see a similar picture, right? Our revenue equals our expenses, year in, year out. Revenue's kind of just covering expenses and we're make sure, we make sure that we're maintaining that council-directed reserve, that minimum reserve requirement. So here's the reserve.
Can I ask a quick question on that last graph? I would assume, similar to when we had these discussions about the trash, that we're not making a bunch of money on this, obviously it's to cover expenses. So why are there a few years where we're collecting more? Is it just to build up those reserves to what's acceptable and then it evens out?
That is a great question. Councilmember, thank you for that. Yes, you're exactly correct. It's just trying to maintain that minimum reserve.
Okay.
Right, don't leave the fund short in any given year.
Thank you.
You got it. All right.
And if we went back in time, we have been short, right? Because we've been supplementing the landscape fee fund with transfers from the general fund?
We have not had transfers from the general fund. What we've done is we've moved expenses out of class one into CIP that, you know, realistically was the same type of thing of transferring money in. We moved expenses out.
Right, but if those expenses stayed with the landscape fund, we would have been short and we would have had the transfer.
Either that or raise the rate higher than they were. Yes, that is correct.
When, when it comes to building that reserve, like sort of the blue blob, like, we don't have to be, I mean, this is one of those, those challenges that we all have in municipal governments, like how fast do you raise a rate? You don't have to raise it to be over the 10% in year one. You just, if the goal is to get above 10%, it doesn't have to happen in '25. It could happen over '25, '26, '27, and you get to the 10%, right? Like, where I'm, I'm going is like, if we're, if we're going down the path of sticker shock, how do you soften the sticker shock surprise so that we sort of smooth over that steep increase?
That's an excellent question. And you already are above the 10% minimum. You referenced this blue block.
So in, in one way to also think about that is that little step you see from '26 to ' '28, it doesn't have to be that high. It could be less as we get closer to the 10% line.
You could if you wanted to use the reserve to sort of subsidize your way into a stable rate.
Sure.
You are correct. That's a, that's an excellent question, thank you. So this is your minimum threshold, 10%, and you can see that you have been doing that, as the finance director said, for a while, expenses were moved out of the landscape fee fund and covered by the general fund, and, and it made this allowable. Here's your 25% maximum. You know, if you start reaching this threshold, then your rates are probably too high and you want to, you know, bring those back down. But this is what's happening with the, the actual reserve. Here's your projected reserve going out. Here's a snapshot of the property units that you have in this landscape fee fund. The lion's share are single-family, more than 50%. You of course have your, your single-family attached units and then your multifamily units.
Is that current numbers or is that once we're fully built out?
These are current numbers.
Okay.
That's another great question. As the landscape rate model proceeds through the next several years, there is an assumption that some more multifamily units will come online in mid-year '27, but there is time between now and '27, so although it's built in, there's time between now and '27. If something happens, the project gets delayed, the project changes, your finance director will be able to react and make those changes in the model.
So if we have more units coming online, I'm assuming that rates maybe won't be escalating as much because we have more units paying into that to cover expenses? Because I can't imagine expenses are going up per unit because it's landscaping and not a per-unit type of expense.
So expenses do increase over time because of inflation and, and the landscape maintenance costs, actually. And I'm so sorry, I think that's my phone, I'm sorry.
Oh, no worries.
I, I thought I put it on silent. I'm gonna stop it so it doesn't.
It's a very pleasant ring.
Sorry, it's, it's, it's an alarm telling me to check my schedule for tomorrow. Because I need that.
You're still on top of it.
Okay, so you are correct that as more units come online, you have more people sharing the costs. But the costs are escalating, right? The cost of water each year, the cost of your, your landscape contract. I heard someone mention Vargas in comments, right? I think that's your landscape, landscape contractor. So those escalate as well, a, and so costs are increasing.
So with inflation, I'm, I'm just basically trying to get to, with these rates and the escalation that we're looking at, the estimated percentage increase, is that taking into account those additional units being brought on? Or is that if everything stayed the same as today and nothing else was built, that's what we're gonna have to look at an increase for?
It assumes that in mid-year 2027, half of those units come online, and then by 2028, they're all online.
Awesome.
For right now, it does.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good question. Good insight. Okay.
Sorry, one last question.
Yes.
The multifamily number, I mean, is it treating Bell Flatirons as one unit?
No, every single unit in Bell Flatirons is a unit in there.
Okay.
Is, did I say that correctly? Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks. Number seems really low.
Okay. So here is, and I went backwards. Okay.
So in that, I'm sorry, in that number, a lot of those units that you're thinking about are considered single-family attached.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for that. All right. So what does this mean for rates, right? Let's get to the bottom of the, let's get to the meat of it here. In our scenario one, remember, no fence maintenance for anyone, we do have a pretty sizable jump in costs in 2026, but this is because of the expenses that have been covered by the general fund are now moved back to the landscape fee fund, and they're covered by that. So there's additional water costs and electricity costs. We worked with your Parks and Recreation and Open Space Director to understand these costs and move these into the landscape fee fund. So then the, the second scenario is all units in the landscape fee fund are covering fence maintenance. Again, there's another, there's a big cost jump, and this is the general fund expenses plus the fence maintenance coming online. And you can see that that cost kind of levels off over time and we're looking at more like inflationary increases. The third scenario is only the Rock Creek units, single-family detached, cover the fence maintenance. And you can see that the biggest increase comes to those units, right? Those Rock Creek units that would be covering the fence maintenance, pretty, pretty big jump in 2026. And then in the fourth scenario, only those Rock Creek units, about 51% of the single-family detached units in that community would cover the fence maintenance because they actually have the fences. So those are the four scenarios. That was pretty quick. I don't have much more to show you or talk about, but I definitely want to allow you to ask questions and turn it back over to the finance director here.
Thanks, Mayor. That's, that's really all we have. And just kind of get your questions and thoughts and feedback on what you want us to proceed with.
There's a summary table that was in the staff memo. Can you, can you put that one up of like basically the four scenarios?
And just for, for clarification, all of And just for clarification, all of these scenarios that we've looked at so far do not include pulling Original Town or Coal Creek Crossing into the pool of landscape fee payers.
That is correct. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah.
Yes, exactly. I mean, I thought that this did a great job of sort of summarizing everything, you know, because if the first question right now that we're trying to, you know, answer is, you know, what are we charging today versus what should we be charging? Then there's obviously, we've got to increase it. And then the second question, the second order question is, what about fencing? And I think effectively, that's what we've got to answer now as just direction. We're not even taking a vote. The vote will be part of the budget cycle, right?
Yeah, we're looking for direction from the council. And then we'll include whatever direction you provide us in the budget work sessions that are.
Whatever.
I'm in the budget to reflect that direction and then have discussions at the work session.
Okay, so just, I have got an administrative question. If we went down the path on the fence maintenance where the town bills for the fence maintenance and then continues to provide that service, and let's say we went with the, that final line down there where the fence maintenance is paid for only by the Rock Creek properties that actually have town-adjacent fencing, how will staff go through the process of identifying those homeowners? And then are you talking about the same rate for all fence-adjacent properties? You know, some have 10 linear feet, some have 250 linear feet. So it's the same rate? So you're just going to like basically earmark these homes and they're all going to get one rate and everybody else is going to get another rate?
Correct. It would be, you know, through GIS with our planning department, pulling out all the addresses that have fence. And then those would be one rate. And then everybody else would be another is kind of how we've put this together.
Okay. No, and that's the right way to do it. I mean, of course, there's a lot of asymmetry because like with water, you know, that house with 250 linear feet of fence, they're getting billed for the amount of water that they use and then the amount of sewage capacity that they use and so on and so forth versus the home with no adjacent fence or five linear feet is using probably a lot less water and they charge a different rate. So I've got my own issues with sort of, you know, a one-size-fits-all socialist sort of view on, we all pay the same. But again, I appreciate that all the work that went into this just to get it to here because we've just been, you know, letting town just pay for all of it. And this is going to get it back to making sure the people that benefit directly are paying their share.
And just for clarification, I don't think it was stated, and I hope I'm right on this, but the fence maintenance is just for painting the fences.
That is correct.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, like when I say fence maintenance, I should say fence painting.
Yeah.
Fence painting and everywhere in there should just say fence painting. And that's what, no, Matt, that's a really good point because it's time to replace in some places and some will argue around who should be doing that. But the point is, all the town has ever done is painted. Strip it and then paint it. Okay, thank you.
That, that was, that's really my question. We know the paint won't even stay on the fences now. So how do, and maybe this is like another lane of the conversation, but when it's time to replace the fences, if we're covering it, who's, who does that? What are we signing up for that? How?
The fences, that would be the homeowner.
But in the past, the town has replaced boards, the town has done stuff to the fencing.
Vertical, the vertical boards, right? But, or the horizontal ones, depending on what type of fence you have. But what we're proposing is if the council would like to start this up again, that we would, it would be only for painting the fences. Any replacement would be by the homeowner.
So the feedback from some of the, the park staff already has been that some of the fences won't hold the paint now. So do they, do they have the autonomy to say like, we're, we're not going to maintain anymore until you've replaced the fence? Because who decides that? Because of homeowner.
Homeowners to get the fence repaired before we go in and paint. But if they refuse to repair the fence or replace it, then we would do that section and.
I would like there to be tight language around whatever that is. Because I could see that going a long way of someone holding out, not replacing the fence when it needed to be replaced and then blaming the town because of the way their fence looks. And, and so I just, that's important to me because they're all due up. It's time. I would also like them to not be wood. That's maybe a different conversation, but they're literally wicks between the homes. And if they're going to all be changed out, then this is a great time to ensure that they don't get replaced with cedar fencing.
The question I have, it says that this includes Original Town and Coal Creek Crossing. So I just want to be clear that the, the study that was done meets whatever legal test there is for ensuring that this rate is, can be equally applied across the town for the, for these scenarios?
Nick, do you want to take that one?
Sorry to ask the hard one.
The benefit is there, but that's maybe a longer conversation that we can have in a different forum offline.
I'll, let me, let me jump in here. So from, from my perspective, I appreciate seeing the numbers here of what the numbers would look like if we brought in all residents into the landscape fee versus the current residents that are currently paying. So excluding Original Town and Coal Creek Crossing. Since I've been on the board since 2016, like, I think one of the first things that I remember is that the Coal Creek Crossing, sorry, Coal Creek Crossing residents, that when that FDP was approved, that it was inadvertently omitted that you guys were always supposed to be paying the landscape fee, but you, you haven't been. Original Town folks, totally different story. You guys have been here forever and don't have an FDP that has been applied or approved by the town. So a different kind of animal there in terms of what the discussion is. That said, I think what people are used to is, is important as just kind of like a, a starting point. And for at least the, the Original Town and Coal Creek Crossing folks, I certainly, you know, wouldn't support starting on day one, full freight, you're paying the full landscape fee that everybody else in town is. So what I would want to see before I really got behind any sort of assessment of a fee on the Coal Creek Crossing and Original Town folks is really like what the percentage of the lands that are benefiting from the maintenance, the watering, all, all the, all the things that are paid out of the landscape fee, like what proportionate benefit is that section of town getting? And then I think we can make an informed decision. So for purposes of tonight and for purposes of the budget going forward, I would just say like, let's leave Original Town and Coal Creek Crossing out of the discussion for now until we get additional information. So there's not going to be any surprise going forward for next year. And then let's just figure out how to fix the, the current landscape fee that we're dealing with right now, which is the people that are currently paying. So I appreciate having those numbers. And, you know, basically the, the difference is that if, if Original Town and Coal Creek Crossing get brought into, you know, the landscape fee, it's going to obviously subsidize the current payers of the landscape fee by a couple bucks per month. It's not, it's not a huge difference, but it's, it's a couple, couple bucks per month.
And to that point, and based on some of the feedback we've gotten through email and some of the speakers that talked tonight, with that, are there, is there an opportunity then for the town to provide that same or a similar level of service in Coal Creek Crossing and Original Town? We heard about an area where Coal Creek Crossing HOA mows on a regular, on an annual basis. So as part of that landscape fee, is that something that the town contracts out or manages at that point so that they are receiving some direct benefit?
Well, I mean, I think we got to be careful, right? There's a handful of HOAs around Superior. Coal Creek Crossing is one of them.
And I agree that we got to be careful.
Other HOAs do a lot of their own site maintenance and the residents benefit from the green spaces and they're all paying the landscape fee. This argument around, you know, I benefit more, I benefit less is a challenging one. You know, because wildflowers for everybody, community park, the playground that we're talking about in 15 minutes or so benefits everybody, right? And it's maintained by these fees and these funds, right? So we just got to be really careful because, you know, to me, the example is Bell Flatirons, 1,200 units. There's no space in there maintained by the town. But they all pay the fee. So.
I agree, we have to be careful and thoughtful. And I'm not sure how we thread that needle in that discussion, but I just want to just put it out there is, is that something that can even be on the table for discussion?
Anything can be on the table for discussion. The thing, I'm not crazy about this in its form right now. To me, it just reeks of a tax. And I'm not seeing any, any benefit for, and even easing in Original Town and Coal Creek. And, you know, caveat, I live in Original Town now, but, you know, my saying is that I don't see a benefit to anybody in Original Town or in Coal Creek Crossing to get, let's call it what it is, taxed for this because they're not seeing a benefit. So, you know, we've got a lot of maintenance we've got to do through Rock Creek. We've got to do a lot of things and we've just got to balance our books better because we keep adding more and more projects to this town, more and more things that we're doing and where do we get the money for that? Let's tax more people. That's not the way to do it. We need to be a lot more judicious and maybe let's pretend this is our bank account. Let's treat it like our own checking account and actually pay attention to what we're saying yes and no to. Because saying yes to something like this is just telling the people in Coal Creek and Original Town, yes, you know, pony up, throw us your money and don't expect to get anything from you because that is the definition of a tax. So I'm definitely not in favor of this, not, not in the least bit.
Right. So I mean, like, what we've got tonight is, you know, the scenario that the rate study was done didn't contemplate adding Original Town and Coal Creek Crossing. So really, that's, that's a discussion point, but it's, it's for fixing the landscape fee as it currently exists. And then figuring out, number one, do we want to add back in fence painting for Rock Creek? So we need to make that kind of policy direction call. And then if so, who's going to pay for it is going to be everybody that pays the landscape fee? Is it going to be just Rock Creek residents? Or is it going to be the Rock Creek residents with fences? Or alternatively, do we not want to add the fence maintenance? In which case, then in order to make the landscape fee solvent and we're not, you know, subsidizing it by expense transfers out to the general fund, it's going to look at, you know, 15% raise for all units? So any thoughts?
I would like to clarify, for example, if we gave direction for the, the last option for fence maintenance for those with the fences backing, are they in on this decision? Like, do we, have we, do they want that? Is that something like?
We have not surveyed any of those residents or any residents in Rock Creek.
It's like the HOA going to have a, I know that we have, it hasn't been talked about much lately, but we have tried to meet with them to talk about this issue multiple times just for the public so it's clear that we were not making these decisions in a bubble. They have not agreed to meet to discuss this. And so I'm just wondering, like, we can decide to give direction for this tonight, but they have to agree to that, right? I mean, they're, they're private fences.
Right. This is why, that's why my position's always been, we shouldn't be maintaining them or painting them. But if that's what the council wants to do, we have been doing that because the districts, before we assumed them were doing that and we said we would continue that service and we have for the last 23 years. But, so yeah.
So I'll, I'll give you my thought, my thoughts. I'm happy to stay right here. And this 15% increase is insane. I mean, we got to find a way to make that like 5 or 10% and just cut back on service. Everything here about fence maintenance was at the favor of the HOA. And, you know, kind of to Jen's point, you know, if I'm this homeowner, I'm thinking, I don't want to pay an extra $25, we'll call it 20 bucks a month, you know, call it 200 a year, just to paint my own fence. I will paint that myself. And we've opted a homeowner into something that they may not even want. We've had the HOA tell us, we would like that you should paint these fences, but we haven't heard from these homeowners that maybe get hit with a very big number. But I'm, again, what is a town, what is the purpose of town government? It's to make sure people get safe water to drink. They've got somewhere that when they flush the toilets, the stuff goes somewhere, the roads are safe to drive. This is not in the town's charter to be painting fences. And it's interesting that we're here, but this is like the only community that I can find in a greater Denver metro area that does this. So it's about time for the HOA to step up and do something. And if they don't want to, fine. But what we've been doing for the green spaces is amazing across town. Everybody uses our parks. They are taught, thought of as, you know, one of the most valuable assets. So let's continue to do what we're doing, but find a way to soften this, this step increase. That's my thoughts.
You know, Neil, to your point, just as a, what happens when we do that with the HOA and we say we're going to stop paying for it? You got to maintain your own fences and they go into disrepair.
They're private fences.
Yeah. But does their architectural committee now step in and start charging them to do it?
They could. They've said that they don't have the capacity to do that.
They'd have to have the capacity, right? I mean, we're putting it back on them and they would be in charge of it.
Oh, yeah, they can, they can step up and do that anytime.
Yeah.
They've abdicated all those responsibilities and they've not chosen to step up. So you're absolutely right. They can go ahead and do this. It's on them to step up and do it, not us to solve their problem.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I don't want to get into trying to solve their own problem for them, but I mean, we're creating.
That's what they want us to do.
Of course they do. Yeah, yeah. But I'm thinking, we step away, they're going to start finding themselves because the architectural review committee is going to say, your fence is going to be maintained. And they're going to be, that's their own deal, let them handle it.
Yeah.
Well, the problem is that for 20 years, we solved the problem for them. So, you know, people relied on it and, you know, they're used to it. No homeowner, homeowner in Rock Creek paints their exterior fence because they haven't had to. It's been paid for by everybody, you know, by, by all the taxpayers in Superior that have been paying into the landscape fund as subsidized by the, by the general fund to the extent that the landscape fund hasn't been sufficient. But, you know, we had this discussion before. I mean, I, I think in a perfect world, you know, people would be painting their own fences and the town wouldn't be in the business of it. And we've got an HOA that governs, that has covenants that deal with the aesthetics of this community. These fences are on private property. They're not owned by the town. And, you know, I think it makes sense for the HOA to do a special assessment if they need to, you know, raise funds for like a war chest to pay for the replacement or the overall, you know, maintenance of the fence. But the HOA, you know, to date, hasn't indicated any sort of like interest in doing so and they'd rather us do it. So we've got the numbers here that can show how we can take care of it. And I guess where I'm coming on, on, on this whole discussion is, I don't ever want to talk about Rock Creek fences again for the rest of my life. So I would like, I'm serious. I, I never want to talk about this again. So I would like to just make a decision, one way or the other, give direction and then be done with it and focus on other things. And, and I'm fine if the town council just says, you know what, we don't want to talk about this anymore and we're going to at least make our landscape fee solvent and we're not, you know, paying it out of the general fund. We're at least making the people who are, you know, benefiting from the fence painting, painting to pay it themselves. I'm, I'm okay with that. I'm also okay if, if the council says, no, we want to stick with the principle of no fence maintenance included because that's the decision that we made two years ago.
So these fences are on private property and in my opinion, they're the responsibility of the private property owner, not, not the towns. And, you know, Mr. Mayor, as you have said numerous times, that change is hard, especially if you've been providing a service for two decades, the change is going to be incredibly hard for those residents that are impacted by this. And change will, I mean, I think the, the feedback and the fervor will probably die down over time, but I don't believe that the town should be painting these fences that are on private property.
I think that the feedback will die down if we start painting them. If we stop, we will continue to hear from people saying, especially as they start to weather and, because, you know, we're in that kind of like four-year cycle right now where we haven't, you know, it hasn't been more than four years since we've painted the last round of fences. But once we start getting to the point where things start looking weathered and aged, then we're going to start hearing from people. So the question is like, what's?
And those are responsibility of the HOA. It's the responsibility of the HOA to, to manage this for their covenants and whatnot. It's not the town's responsibility to.
It's not the town's responsibility to be maintaining these fences.
I mean, to Jen's point, they've reached the end of their useful life, paint isn't sticking. It feels like a very slippery slope because the expectation is going to be, well, you've been painting, now you need to maintain and replace and repair, and that's not something we're going to be doing. So, I mean, really, the, the end of the day, the, the fence is just going to be replaced, and that's not the town's responsibility. And throwing lipstick on a pig that is like slaughtered and dying doesn't seem like a good use of taxpayer funds, so, or bee collection. It's like, just let the dream die, and the fences need to be replaced. Um, I'm 100% in favor of we need to make the fund solvent. I don't think, at least at this time, without additional information, it makes sense to do original town and Coal Creek. Um, I know the argument is that the benefit is there, but how much of a benefit? And then that feels to me, it's disproportionate if anything was charged, that it should be an assessment that makes sense for the amount of benefit that they're receiving. But regardless, we need to stop paying out of the general fund to subsidize the landscape fee. One question I had, because it was in a lot of resident emails, and I was shocked by it, so I just wanted to understand, Founder's Park, we were told that that's not paid out of the town budget, but I don't know what budget that would come out of. So what bucket does Founder's Park, how is that maintenance handled?
Founder's Park is actually paid out of SMID, so the interchange district and that area around it, so the marketplace and the proximity to that is why that got put into the SMID Superior Metropolitan, Metropolitan Interchange District.
And some additional information on that is, that parcel of land was part of the Superior Marketplace PD, um, at one time, so it was slated to be commercial. And we, the town worked with the developer, um, back a few years ago to have that deeded over to the town to make it into a park, and so that's another reason it's in that district.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's actually more of a legal construct than anything else in terms of why it's in that budget versus the general fund, or the, I mean, it's basically a legacy of how the marketplace was developed, rather than, it's over there, so it doesn't belong to anybody.
Well, we have the, I mean, we could move it into the landscape fund, but right now, the benefit of having it in SMID is that the sales tax that's generated and the property tax that's coming from the marketplace is funding the maintenance of Founder's rather than the residents of the town. Right?
Yeah, it's just property tax.
Property tax, not sales tax.
It used to be sales tax until the debt was paid off, but yes, correct.
Okay. Well, my, uh, my preference would be to have, uh, fence maintenance, fence painting restarted, um, and just paid by those homeowners that are benefiting from the fence painting. That, that's going to be my recommendation. I'm in that camp full disclosure, I have a fence that's, uh, previously painted by the town, um, and I'm not interested in having other people pay for my fence painting that don't similarly have a fence to be painted, so. But in, in the interest of, you know, I, I look at it from, from the perspective of like, there's, there's right and wrong, there's what, what would be kind of the perfect scenario, and like, the town shouldn't be in this kind of, you know, business of painting fences, but the fact that we did it for 20 years is, um, I think, a compelling reason to entertain, you know, restarting it, um, and, but provided that there's like clear communication to the residents that says, uh, if your fence falls down in the wind, if your fence, you know, is no longer able to take this paint, um, that the town's not going to be replacing any of the fences, but, you know, we will, as a service to the residents, serve as a pass-through to basically, uh, collect the amounts that are going to go to the, the fence painting contractor. So I'm, I'm open to entertain that last possibility, which is the 15% increase for the no fence, 40% increase with a fence. But I'm interested in hearing others.
Yeah, I was going to say, one, one of the challenges I have with going down that path is the asymmetry for, for fence lines. Like, so, I always use my parents' house because it's an easy example, because they back up to Wildfire Park, it's 67 linear feet. So for, basically over a four-year cycle, they'll pay an extra $900 for 60 feet of paint. I mean, that's like two gallons of paint, right? You know, and I could paint that for them pretty easily, and it's hard to justify, you know, for folks when we're, when we're talking about raising costs and everything, and these are just this year, right? This is assuming that over the next four years, it doesn't change. I mean, it's hard to rationalize an incremental $700 for this one home for paint, for basically two gallons of paint. Um, and of course, and the asymmetry here is there are some people that have three or 400 feet of, of backing up to open space, right? So unless we can find a way to, to normalize that, I am a hardcore no, or find a way to let people opt out of the one-size-fits-all.
I think that one of the concerns that I have with, um, having the town do the painting is that, I think Jen had mentioned this, I think we start ourselves down a very slippery slope, like, town staff is now going to have to be answering questions of, okay, well, my fence is falling down, so when's the town coming out to fix the fence, or fix this board, or replace this? And that's just, is going to create a lot more work for town staff to have to respond to that, and the residents are not going to be happy with that response, so it gets elevated to the town council, and the town council says no, and they're still not happy, and town staff are still in the middle of the swirl of having to say, no, it's just paint. Um, and I think we could save ourselves a lot of headaches. I'm not saying we're not going to eliminate the headaches, because I think there will still be a number of people, as the mayor pointed out, that will be upset with this decision, and we're going to get email and phone calls about it. So I don't, I don't know that there's a way of avoiding that, but having a clear, like, we're not doing any painting whatsoever, it is your responsibility as the private property owner, or it's the HOA's responsibility, that is, to me, a much clearer message. So I, I, I would not support the town painting the fence.
I feel like it, I would be more on board with it if it was, if they weren't at the end of their useful life. So for me, I think it's great to leverage economies of scale and bring down the cost for people having to paint their fence. I totally get your point about some fence lines are much larger than others. But we've heard from residents that there's not a safe way for them to access their fence to paint it, and so that's one issue. Making sure they're uniformed, so maybe one person paints theirs, somebody else doesn't, or the hue is off, or, you know, there's a variety of reasons why it would make sense to do that all at once. And I would be in favor of talking about that, but because the paint isn't even sticking anymore and the fences are falling apart, um, that's, that's kind of the stop for me. Otherwise, I would be 100% behind, let's leverage economies of scale and, and help residents who need to be able to paint their fence that can't access it. But because I think it's kind of an exercise in futility at this point, because they're not taking the paint, then to me, it feels like they just need to start looking at replacing.
And the HOA would have the same access to economies of scale as the town would.
Exactly.
They can put out a, put out an RFP for a fencing contractor to come in and paint however many miles of fence that we have, or replace the boards, or whatever. So, I mean, the HOA absolutely can do that, and the town staff and rest of the residents don't have to be burdened with that.
Yeah.
One thing, um, I sent this to the Rock Creek HOA because, um, wildfire partners is doing, um, they launched a multi-family wildfire mitigation rebate pilot program for projects that communities want to do to upgrade things like fencing or roof or anything like that. Um, this is specifically for multi-family, so this would be like the town homes, this wouldn't be for the single family, but I expect there will be some resources or things that the HOA could actually work through that we as a municipality would not be able to access funds in terms of upgrading the entire Rock Creek HOA with resilient wildfire, um, you know, resistant materials. Um, and so I think there's a lane there for them to mitigate some of those costs that we just wouldn't be able to access. Um, I don't love, like, I'm, I'm more in the mindset of the mayor, um, right or wrong, the fences were being taken care of for all this time, and I, I don't want to just like pull the rug out from under people. And I, I would like to make this softer for them, and, and I just don't know how we do that though, without staying linked into it forever. Um, and, you know, the original agreement, the fact that, that, the in perpetuity-ness of it is, no one would make a deal like that. And so, um, as, as they're aging and it's time to replace and have broader conversations from the HOA, I think, I was leaning towards the last option, but I think the first one, where we just are not in it anymore at all, is the smartest thing to do for, for our role as council members for the town's sustainability. Um, I, I think that's, personally, I don't love it, but I think that's the smart thing to do for, for the, the economic stability of the town and to stay out of this. They are private fences, so.
Haven't heard from you at first, you're not last.
Thanks for not letting me be last. Uh, I know a lot of people who own the fences, uh, long, um, town property. But I really have been concerned about our involvement in that process, um, and honestly have appreciated everyone's insight, um, tonight. I'm leaning towards the first option with no fence maintenance costs included, um, but going to echo what, um, Council Member Shaw said about the 14 or 15% across. Would love to see that even drop to 10, which I know does not then meet the economies of scale, or meet our budget. So I'm sure Jeff will, um, teach me about that later, uh, during our many sessions on budgeting, but it's a hard decision, but I think for the clarity and, um, moving forward as a town, I think it's something that can be done at this point, and, uh, we can move forward. Jeff, I don't know if you would know this, or this is maybe a question that we'd have to come back to, because it's a little nuanced, but, um, it's about $5 roughly across the board for the 15% increase, and I know that there's been discussion up here about limiting services to bring that down to 10%. Do you know what types of, like, where could there be cost savings? Because I think, at least for me, a $5 increase, but knowing that the parks and flowers and everything will still be there, which increases our property values and makes it such a beautiful place to live, I'd rather pay extra $5 and just call it a day and continue to see the beautiful area that we live in stay beautiful. So are there areas that we can cut costs that you're aware of that would bring it down to 10% without necessarily, um, I guess, eroding how the community looks?
I don't have the answers, I don't know if Wesley does.
I'll just, I'll just chime in here, the budget's pretty tight in this fund. Um, we'll, we'll go back and look through the budget for this fund to see, you know, what might be able to be reduced and not have a significant impact on the look or feel of the community, but, um, it is pretty tight currently, so, um, but we're, we're going to, after the meeting tonight, this week, next week, we'll go back and take a look and work with Leslie on it.
Well, maybe we could ratchet it up with the, the reserve, right? In terms of, you know, using the, the reserve as a cushion to get to the full 15%?
We could look at that too.
So maybe do seven and a half and seven and a half, or 555, to get to the 15 over time.
Even if we go below the reserve for one year and then build it back up, you know, by going to, you know, seven and a half, seven and a half, you know, seven instead of kind of the 15 and three that, you know, Maria had in those things. So yeah, we can definitely look at that as well. And then we can also bring it up during the budget discussion and figure out where we want to head.
Because I just don't want to get so hung up on a percentage that we're, A, making our community not look as nice, or have the same amenities that everybody enjoys, um, or B, subsidizing anymore, because that has got to stop. We have to make that fund self-sustaining for what we're paying out of it. Um, I don't love that we haven't been doing that up to this point, so, uh, making that fund make sense. Um, so, yeah, if there's cost savings, but I know it is tight, so, but at the end of the day, it's $5, it's less than a Starbucks. I think, at least for me as a community member, I'd rather see my community look beautiful and maybe cut out a pink drink here and there, so.
How many years have we kept the landscape fee flat?
Hmm, probably good 15 years.
I was going to say, I was in the teens when I started raising it.
It had a sizable fund balance though as well, which was part of the reason.
But eventually that got.
It's been spent down over the years, yeah.
Okay. All right, uh, Jason, did you?
Just a flock of dead horse. I, I agree with Neil and Mike on the no fence maintenance. I think the HOA, I mean, yeah, we fell into doing it, but just because you've been doing something doesn't mean you have to keep on doing it. There are things you can change about, and I think that the HOA could step up a little bit more on that. Um, yeah, I'm for no fence maintenance, and I definitely want to double down again, saying nothing with original town and Coal Creek Crossing, being any fees on this whatsoever, so I'm good with that.
That's, that's not in the discussion for tonight.
Fantastic.
All right, do you have the direction that you need for moving forward with the budget?
I believe we do, and I just want to thank Maria for.
Yeah, Maria, thank you for doing this.
Great study to get us here.
Fee study.
We'll, uh, put this in the budget and, uh, discuss that, and then we'll discuss it in our work sessions at the budget, work sessions.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, it is 9:10, why don't we take? You want to come up for public comment, Russ?
Yes, please.
Okay, come on up.
I'll try. Thanks, bud. Sorry. You guys do. Sure. Well, I was, I got totally confused when I, um, read the agenda for tonight's meeting, uh, because I've been hearing rumors about this landscape fee that was going to be assessed like a tax that we don't get to vote on in original town. And, um, so that upset a lot of people, the rumors, and I really appreciate hearing what several of you have said about that tonight. But I'm still really confused, and I want to ask, just for everyone's benefit and the community, um, what, uh, first of all, the only mention in the agenda item was about Rock Creek fences, and yet you're talking about electricity and water and, um, and planting flowers and maintaining trees. And so what is this landscape fee all about?
Uh, landscape fee pays for basically all of the maintenance in the green areas around town.
Okay.
It's all the mowing and trail plowing when it's snowy and flower planting, all of that.
Well, that's what I thought. Um, and, um, I hate to bring it up because I love y'all, and, but I was one of 20 people out of 80 that voted against the annexation of Rock Creek. And I think it's been just ridiculous that, um, the town has been paying for the maintenance on those fences for 20 years. I think y'all know that I have a fence, and.
You haven't heard.
I have to pay for it, and I've recently had to do some maintenance on it. And I, I just don't see why the town should have anything whatsoever to do with fences on private property. There is, after all, an HOA over there that is supposed to be involved with things like that, and, um, I don't even want to discuss that. Um, I do want to point out that as far as the landscape fee goes, that original town, um, gets very little benefit from that, and that, uh, the, uh, the poor little trees we have on the occasional corner down on Coal Creek Drive, and the little flowers that are planted around them don't amount to much landscaping. Founder's Park is a regional facility. Um, I have rarely run into any of my neighbors when I walk my dog in there. Children's Park is the only, uh, really, uh, local, uh, public facility. public facility that the landscape fee would have anything to do with. And it's, it's a one block wide and, and one street, one block long and one, one street wide. So that's not too much either. So basically I just wanted to say that I agree with you, Mark. I don't ever want to hear any more discussion down here about Rock Creek fences. I think this has been the biggest waste of an hour that I've seen down here in a long time.
Should watch more of our meetings. Thank you for your comments. Come on up.
I'm Robert Ludke from 121 8th Avenue in Coal Creek Crossing. Just a point of clarification. I heard that your decision was something to be put into the budget. I don't know what you decided. Can you just clarify what of those options and so forth are going to go into the budget?
We directed staff to send the landscape fee increase that is projected under the line item for no fence maintenance costs included. So it's basically for anybody who's currently paying the landscape fee, whether you have a single family unit, live in Rock Creek, single family attached, multifamily, those are, those landscape fees are increasing by about 15%. Subject to any massaging that the finance department does, Coal Creek Crossing and Original Town are not included in that discussion.
Yeah. I just wanted to be clear in terms of what the final decision was. Thank you very much.
And it's, nothing's final until we vote on the budget.
Well, yeah, final.
Final for tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any additional public comment here? All right. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate it. Why don't we take 10 minutes and be back at 9:25?
All right, we are back. We're on to our consent agenda. We polled 7C and 7D off the consent agenda. So we have 7A, D, E, F, G, and H still on the consent agenda. So entertaining the motion to approve.
So move.
A, D, E, F, G, and H. We've got a motion from Mayor Protem Serbu.
Second.
Second from council member Craycraft. And we are spending money. So we'll do roll call vote, please.
Mayor Lasas?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Serbu?
Yes.
Council member Cowish?
Yes.
Council member Miller?
Yes.
Council member Shaw?
Yes.
Council member Foster?
Yes.
Council member Craycraft?
Yes.
All right. Passes unanimously. I polled 7C, which is consideration of a resolution of the town councils of the town of Superior approving advisory committee appointments for Superior Youth Leadership Council. I have two applicants that are applying for SILK, so I will be recusing myself from this, this vote.
Take this over now.
Well, no, I mean, somebody can make a motion, but I'm just not going to vote on it. I'm not going to make the motion because I'm recusing myself, but I'll.
Heather should make a motion.
Yeah.
Come on, Heather. Make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
7C. We're on 7C.
What is that Lisa?
Short one.
Thank you for this opportunity. A resolution of the, well, this is resolution number R-59.
Yes.
Thank you. Series 2025. A resolution of the council of the town of Superior, Colorado, appointing numbers to the Superior Youth Leadership Council.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
A second.
Okay. We've got a motion from council member Craycraft and a second from council member Foster. We'll do roll call vote because I'm recused.
Council member Foster?
Yes.
Council member Cowish?
Yes.
Council member Shaw?
Yes.
Council member Miller?
Yes.
Council member Craycraft?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Serbu?
Yes.
All right. The item passes 6-0 and we're on to 7D, which is a second read and consideration of an ordinance of the town council of the town of Superior amending chapter six of the Superior Municipal Code by the addition of a new article 11 regarding contractor licensing. And Jason, you pulled this.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. I just, I've been reading through this and I kind of want to make a recommendation that we pump our brakes on this a little bit and we do not put a vote to this. And maybe we can discuss this at the September meeting. I just think that there is way too much vagueness in the way this is written. Could I give a little bit of clarification maybe on, on how we got to this point where we decided that we needed to do this?
Is Renee here? I mean, we had this conversation last meeting.
But what, what it specifically is because we're, we're at the end of the, we're in pretty much at the end of the fire rebuilds. There's not a lot of residential construction going on. It seems like the majority of construction we have going forward is going to be commercial development and those contractors definitely have to have a contractor's license. And I'd like to see if we're modeling this off of Denver's licensing requirements, which happen to be the most stringent in the state and not just off of Boulder counties.
I did not use Denver when I modeled this. I used various Boulder County municipalities.
Which, I'll say that, say it again, sorry.
Various Boulder County municipalities.
Boulder County.
Erie was, Erie was the biggest one. Lafayette was probably the second biggest. And then a little sprinkle of Louisville.
Okay.
I think, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, there's, there's just a few, well, I've got a long list, so you can go ahead and pop in.
I was just going to say, I think even though we're toward the end of the Marshall Fire rebuilds and some majority will be commercial, if people are like finishing out their basement or doing things where they need a contractor on site, this basically gives them protections to where there's some repercussions essentially if the contractors aren't doing what they're supposed to do. And then that's documented where, whereas right now that's documented in neighboring municipalities, but ours, there's really no repercussions at all. So if somebody has a bad experience, it just kind of is what it is.
And this will allow them to enter in the license directly into our, yeah, community core software. Whereas now, what, you know, Renee mentioned last meeting was they're having to go and get the information and then put it into community core. So they're having to take an extra step. And this would allow the contractor to just do it themselves.
Can you all hear me?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Renee.
This is Renee. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I did want to point out that you're right that like new builds and even downtown may not need permits moving forward, but it also includes things like air conditioner units, furnace replacements, re-roofs. All of those things have contractors who would be going through this process to be licensed with the town. So if you think of it on those terms, it's a little bit different, I think.
Now, that, that definitely helps to, you know, to see the reason behind why we're doing it. But you know, the other flip of the coin is on people doing construction of their own properties or not being required to have a license. And I just want to make sure that we've thought this through in so much as that, what are our safeguards on somebody building on their property, for example? And this is a scenario that's kind of takes a little bit of precedent. Someone decides they want to build their own property and it's not their property yet. It's not their private residence if they have a lot that they've purchased. They start the building process. They can no longer afford to do the building process. So they decide to move into the domicile, which is not, doesn't have a C of O. It's not a finished building. It's not a safe building in which to reside in. What are the ramifications of talking or at least having some sort of guidelines for this individual to build their house that we can actually set up so that they understand what can and cannot be done per our code? Because one of the reasons reading through this, you wanted these contractors to understand what we require of them before a C of O or a substantial completion of a project is, I'm not seeing any of that here for somebody that just decides, I want to build my own house, or I want to do my own garage, or I want to do something else. Because what are the guidelines here that if, you know, Mike Smith decides he wants to build his own house, he buys a lot, he decides to build it and he just can't make a go of it and decides to live in an unfinished house? What, what does he understand at onset of getting the permit he can and cannot do through this process?
The, a person who chooses to do that, they wouldn't be permitted to live in a house that's, doesn't have a certificate of occupancy. If they're doing work, they can do work in their house. We didn't include owners who own property because it puts additional monetary funds for people who own their homes to do, who want to do work on their homes. If you have a contractor license, so this does hold contractors responsible. So it's really trying to protect the homeowner while also allowing the homeowner to do work if they choose to. Within the confines, they still have to follow code. They still have to have inspections. They still need to go through the proper processes. And we monitor that through our building department, through inspections and things like that. So I, I understand your concern. This doesn't necessarily address that. It's not addressed in, you know, our current way of doing things either. But that scenario should be, you know, part of the building code itself and baked in already to the existing code in order to maintain the health and safety of anyone doing work, whether it's their home or not.
Well, I mean, to that point, is there anything we can do? For example, work hours we typically have right now are 7:00 AM till 7:00 PM. And I know that someone could have the leeway to say, I'm going to work in my house all night. I do it every single night. There's a bed on the premises. They're obviously occupying this property. You know, life safety prohibits this. We can't allow individuals to be occupying houses that aren't finished. So I'd like to see something in there when someone decides that they want to undertake this, that they understand the ramifications, that they cannot occupy the house overnight or make this into a domicile because they can't afford to live in a separate one. You know, I'm not throwing anybody in the bus, but there are circumstances like this where people are taking advantage of this and it creates a life. where people are taking advantage of this and it creates a life safety issue. What if the person creates a fire on the premises and it burns the next house down? Who's liable for that? Is it going to be the town? You know, because we weren't able to make sure that this person wasn't occupying a residence without a C of O? I, just food for thought. I just, I just think that there's things that we need, you know, we're going hard on contractors for a good reason, but people to decide to be their own general contractor, and it is a massive undertaking to be a GC on your own. I've done, I've never wanted to do it. I've done construction site supervision on my own projects, but GC, no way. Couldn't, you couldn't pay me enough to do it. It is a lot of work and getting into this without understanding something along the lines of what you're required to do and abide by, I think would be very, very helpful for people, just especially taking their first step for the first time. And then there's the second thing, which I'm a little leery about. You know, you talked about the, the financial implications of a contractor. When a contractor takes on a project, they have to keep a trust of all the funds so they can pay their subcontractors. Is there something like this where a homeowner is opting in to do his own project? Do they understand that there is, or is there something similar to a trust that the private homeowner has to adhere to so that the subcontractors get paid?
I mean, that's a Colorado law question. That's not really a question for...
Yeah, I, I understand your concerns, Mayor Protem. I don't, I guess I just don't, and you know, maybe this is my own ignorance, I don't see how this ordinance is going to affect any, any of your concerns insofar as living in a, living in a house without a CO or any of the other kind of scenarios you mentioned. All this does, all this is doing is saying, when you have to work in the town, you have to have a town license. The town already does that. We just do it a little differently and allow licenses from other places, but you still have to have a license to work in the town. So this really, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to like devalue it by just calling it a procedural implementation, but it kind of is. I mean, there's not a lot of new substance here. Homeowners, and Renee can correct me, homeowners, I think, can already work on their own houses without contractor licensing. Contractors who come into the town already have to be licensed. This is just allowing all of that to happen internally instead of having to pull from multiple places at the same time. I mean, the building code still exists. You still have to meet the building code whether, whether you're doing it or not. This just makes, puts a system in place for the town, just like the surrounding jurisdictions have.
Yeah, no, I understand that. And maybe I'm making a lot out of this, but the definition, you've got a general contractor who's licensed and a general contractor who isn't a homeowner, they're essentially doing the exact same job. There, there's really no difference of what they're trying to do and accomplish. They have to follow the code, they have to pay their subcontractors, but the, the verifiable difference is the person going into this not knowing the process. As a homeowner, it should be giving some sort of a guideline of what to expect going into it, how to get the permit, what the processes through the permit are, you know, some, some set rules where they understand when they have to call for an inspection, at what points they have to do it, do they have to leave work exposed, just like they have to do for a general contractor, would have to do with a license? And the paying part, you know, a lot of people are getting into trouble because they just don't understand that there's a trust that has to be abide by in which you pay your subcontractors. And if that is not adhered to, that is a criminal offense. You know, if you're a general contractor and you don't pay your subs, the only recourse they have is to put a mechanic's lane on your property, but that's a criminal offense that you can't do that. So that's one thing that's being the hall to a general contractor. Is that something that the unknowing home builder who just bought his own property wants to do his own house, is he going to be aware of these things?
It's a criminal offense, so he needs to be aware of it. And I mean, I, I don't think this ordinance is the place to address that. I don't think we can or should address that here because, like you said, it's a criminal offense. I mean, if someone's working on their own house, they need to be aware of how to work on their own house. And we can handle that through building permitting, I think, which we already do. We can handle it through building codes, which we already do. We can handle it through Colorado state law. I just, I don't know what you introduce here that, that remedies that more educational piece, other than, other than making homeowners who want to work on their own house have a contractor license, just like everyone else. I mean, it sounds like really what you're kind of getting down to is, do we remove that exception for homeowners to, to not be permitted in the town? I mean, in terms of trying to keep it within the ordinance that we have in front of us, I think that's, that's really like the up or down here is, do you make homeowners be permitted or to be licensed or do you not?
And when you get a, when you get a building permit, there's a checklist of all the things that you need to pass in terms of your inspections before you get your certificate of occupancy. Right? Like you got to pass, you got to pass your electrical, you got to pass your plumbing, you got to pass whatever, you know, all the, the, the various inspections that need to be passed. And, you know, there's always, there's always going to be obligations, right? Like, you know, that contractor still needs to pay his taxes, right? Like, you know, if he doesn't pay his taxes, the IRS is going to have a problem with that or the Colorado Department of Revenue is going to have a problem with that. And that's not our obligation to notify the homeowner that's acting as his own GC to comply with all other laws. So.
So we're just basically giving them carte blanche, which is, is fair. I mean, I'm, I'm laze fair about it to a certain extent, but I'd like them to understand that getting into these applications are, there are a lot of ramifications that a lot of people don't think twice about because this is not a process they're familiar with.
Well, then, then, so I guess the, the answer to that, I mean, to Nick's suggestion is, do you want to remove the, the provision that allows a homeowner to act as his own GC? Because that solves that problem. If not, then you have a homeowner that acts as his own GC, still needs to get a building permit, can't sleep in a residence without a CO, you know, obviously theoretically could, and we've got means to rectify that, right? You can show up and say, hey, there's no CO here, get out. And if somebody's squatting, like you can start eviction proceedings. There's, there are remedies that are available to any number of, you know, potential code violations. If he's, you know, doing work at night and keeping the neighbors up, there's noise ordinance violations that could come into play to, and then ultimately he still needs to pass the inspections to get the CO. So.
Is that being enforced right now? I mean, do we have, do we have things in place to enforce these?
We do.
We do. Are we doing them?
We are. And we have issued stop work orders in the past if somebody's doing something they're not supposed to be doing. We have, I don't think we've ever had to go through the process of evicting somebody who's living in a house that's not CO'd, but not that I'm aware of at least.
Well, if we leave it in, then they can do what they want, the way they want to do it, and we just throw our hands up, or we can put some sort of thing in there that if, you know, you comply to the certain hours or a certain way. But like, I'm not trying to make it more difficult, I'm just, there's a lot of pitfalls for being an independent contractor. And I just want to make sure the town is, is okay, understands this, and is going to be safe with it, that we're not opening ourselves up to some sort of issues with some decides to build and there's no clue what they're doing with it. So just, I, I think, I would like a greater opportunity to talk about this more, but if you guys want to go ahead and vote on it, we just go ahead and do that and call it good.
I mean, I'm open to any suggestions. If there's something, you know, specifically that you're, you're not comfortable with, you know, we don't need to necessarily pass this tonight. But, you know, if, if there isn't something like specific that like needs further thought.
If you're looking for hours of like contractor, like construction, we can add that. I don't think that would go in this particular section of the code or this addition. There's other locations. When we do updates to the building code later this year, we can look, I can look at adding something more specific to contractors doing work out particular hours and we can have that discussion as well.
I think we already have that in the code.
7 to 7, and then on the weekends, it's 8. Start time starts at 8.
Yeah, for a particular noise decimal.
Correct. Yep.
I just wasn't sure if he was trying to add something along, like outside of a noise to that part of the code.
No, I was hoping I have a massive can of worms. I don't know, I'll defer to the council on this, but I, I think that I, you know, it's, it seems to me to be very, like you said, Nick, it's, it's based on Boulder County, which tends to be one of the most, I mean, it's not the easiest one in the state, but it's certainly not the one that's the most restrictive. And I wouldn't say Denver's restrictive, but Denver's probably the most intensive as far as what is expected of you, what you should be doing, what the permitting process is, what the processes for everything. If, if you feel that this is the best thing that we've got going forward and it's going to be the best thing for the town and the general contractors and it's protecting the homeowners and the public, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to argue further on it. I just think there's ways that we could fix the part with the independent homeowner that wants to do his own home and become a contractor, not take advantage of certain things just because it's his domicile or the town just won't enforce something.
And there's always the opportunity, if we, you know, if the council decides to adopt this tonight, you know, if we find that there's something that wasn't considered when we drafted the ordinance, or it's not working, we can always amend the code again to correct that measure or implement additional measures or what we find we might need.
Yeah. I mean, this to me, you know, hearing what you're saying about, you know, how the planning and building departments are, are operating, this seems like it's going to be making the town's job easier to, you know, process permit applications and do inspections and, and keep track of who's doing work in town. So I'm, I'm comfortable with it as, as written and willing to entertain any, you know, amendments to it as they arise. Others, any thoughts?
Being one that acted as her own general contractor, this is before I knew Jason, I'd have to say our, our staff does a great job too of, of making sure things are communicated and the steps are a process that we adhere to. And in my case, they definitely held my hand and made sure I got through that process. Part two of that is kind of referring back to our home rule discussion on a lot of these things that are put in place to operate our town. Sometimes they felt vague, but a lot of the times they were in there based on the, on the staff and really us as a council being able to adhere them at that time and to make changes as needed. So I don't know if that helps you, Jason, because I know this is your world. But I think the guidance of obviously everyone through this process, I think it's in a good place, but if you're leaning towards something not being included in here, I think it's something that I would support you on, but I think it's also in a good place.
Fair. No, that's, that's a good point. You did a damn good job, by the way, as a GC. You're not the one I'm talking about. Yeah, I don't know. Well, if you guys want to vote on it and go for it, that's fine. I just, like you said, Matt, it seems to me there, it's vague in areas from what other jurisdictions are doing, but if, if there are things that come up, we can add them in. If it's a document, we can keep working on. Yeah, okay. Yeah, we can go ahead and vote on it.
All right, call the question. Who wants to make a motion? I'll make a motion. Approve Town of Superior Ordinance Number O-14, Series 2025, an ordinance to the Town Council of the Town of Superior amending Chapter 6 of the Superior Municipal Code by the addition of a new Article 11 regarding contractor licensing. Motion from Mayor Lasas, second from Councilmember Miller. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Craycraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Serbu?
Yes.
Mayor Lasas?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowish?
Yes.
All right, passes unanimously. We are on to item eight, which is continuation of a public hearing, consideration of a resolution of the Town Council approving a supplemental budget and appropriations for 2025.
Thanks, Mayor.
We're already gavelled in, right? I'm going to gavel it again. Because that's how I roll.
Jeff is back, second time for this item, but it was a good catch by the council at the last meeting. We went back and had a meeting with Brandon, Public Works Director, and corrected the information, so what you have before you is correct.
Correct. Thank you, Matt. Yes, so as Matt said, we did, you know, thanks for catching that extra cost. So we took that extra cost in that got moved out to 2026's budget out of that, out of this amendment, and that's the only change from what we went over last time. So these are the updated numbers with the estimates for 2025. So I'll answer any questions if you have any.
So instead of a $5.65 million budget amendment as detailed in the memo from the 11th, it's a $3.75 million amendment in the CIP fund.
That is correct.
I appreciate us pausing and making sure that we're being careful as to how we're amending the budget documents. So I don't have anything further. I'm, I'm comfortable with the amended budget for 2025, subject to these revisions. Anybody? All right. Any additional questions for staff? Close the public hearing? Or I'll do public comment first, right? Public comment on budget amendment? Anybody? Anybody on Zoom like to give a public comment? All right, seeing none. Public comment is closed. The public hearing is closed. Discussion? Any further discussion? I'll make a motion to approve Town of Superior Resolution Number R-57, Series 2025, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Superior approving supplemental budget and appropriations for 2025.
Second.
Got a motion from Mayor Lasas, a second from Councilmember Foster. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Protem Serbu?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowish?
Yes.
Councilmember Craycraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Mayor Lasas?
Yes.
All right, passes unanimously. And our final item for tonight is the community park playground design approval. Last and certainly not least, best for last, thank you for your patience.
Oh, is it? Oh, perfect. All right, well, good evening. We are here tonight to seek approval for the final design for a community park playground. So I just wanted to give like a little bit of a recap of kind of the project. So it's a 17,000 square foot play area. All the equipment is aging, in need of, you know, a full renovation. This is funded through the, the bond, the sales tax bond funding. We bid this out in April and we selected A to Z Recreation to do the design for us. And through that process, we had their design build agreement that you all approved on May 27th. We have Josh from A to Z Recreation here tonight if you have questions, specific questions about equipment. And yeah, so we got them on board. They already had done a preliminary design and then we worked on public engagement to get feedback from the community on that preliminary design. So we did the June 18th Civic Space Grand Opening slash Summer Market. We had big posters on display and talked to, I feel like hundreds of people. There are so many people that came by, really overwhelmingly positive feedback. And then we did the town's Fourth of July event at the park booth and then the July Park Meeting. So kind of overall, everything for the most part was really positive. There were actually a lot of comments that we got from the public that were like, you know, it needs to include a zip line and there is a zip line. So that was kind of nice. A lot of compliments on like the amount of shade that was included in the preliminary design.
Was the zip, zip line not in the preliminary design?
It was. I think people just were looking at, you know, certain posters that they couldn't tell it was a zip line, but yes. We got some comments about things like adding a scavenger hunt, which A to Z was able to incorporate into the design. The park committee had some feedback, asking questions about the orientation of the shade structure. So A to Z was able to flip one of the shade structures in the smaller two to five play area, which is on the west side of the park, the kind of turquoise area there. And we weren't able to switch the ones on the, the top of the page here, the ones in the larger play area, just because it didn't fit with the equipment. But anyway, I think throughout the day, there will be shade, you know, all over the playground. It'd be a huge improvement. And yeah, I And yeah, I guess I, I did share the public engagement. We, it was kind of fun. We did index cards and let people kind of give their feedback if they didn't tell us directly. And we got some drawings. We got, we got all kinds of shark drawing. Yeah, so all kinds of interesting feedback and even teenagers came up and talked to us about it. So that, you know, that's pretty exciting. So overall, really good public engagement for this and some of the changes were implemented here. And we're happy with this design. And it also includes a lot more accessible equipment. I did want to mention that. Like some of these slides that Josh could speak to if you want to know more about it. But there are a lot of, a lot of play equipment that actually like a wheelchair could fit on or someone who, you know, uses their arms to get around could, you know, there are just a lot of opportunities here that make this a much more accessible playground. And additionally, the, it will have the port in place safety surfacing, which also is much more accessible. So yeah, just improvements all across the board. So do you have any questions?
Why don't we have Josh come up and just introduce himself and, and tell us about the design kind of philosophy and anything that he wants to highlight?
Just while Josh is coming up, my understanding is that there's also, from an accessibility standpoint, folks that have, for neurodiverse people that come into the park, there's, there's accessibility for them, correct?
Absolutely. All right. Good evening. My name is Josh Sanzalevitz. I'm with A to Z Recreation. I have a background in landscape architecture degree from Colorado State University. And yeah, we're just thrilled to partner with your community on addition of, it's really going to be an incredible new inclusive play space. And with it being inclusive, you know, what we're trying to do is provide different opportunities for all ages, all abilities of children. So, you know, there's swinging, sliding, spinning, zip lining, sensory, balance, just an incredible mix of events for kids as they develop, you know, and, and just it's a very inviting space. So yeah, when we're, you know, looking at, I mean, all kids experience play differently in playgrounds, there's some that want nothing to do with, you know, swings or slides. They just kind of want, you know, maybe a chill spot to hang out. So we do, do we have a pointer at all or? Oh, you know what? I got the mouse here. Okay, so you know, this niche capsule here, it's, it's a little hangout, you know? So there's a little girl in there right now. That'll support two kids. And it's, it's a comfortable little space, kind of a, a social opportunity or a spot for, you know, one child to just kind of hang out and chill. We do have five benches throughout the playground. There's three in this larger play pit, two kind of on the exterior. Here are the smaller pre-K age play pit. Those benches are on the west end, so a parent or caregiver, they can, you know, not only look to the east and see, you know, kids on the closer events, but they can see, you know, the full extents of the play areas. But yeah, it just, accessibility is a huge component to, you know, play spaces anymore. And this playground is just loaded. When approaching the, I mean, this, so this is our-
Where is the AirVenture glider?
So the AirVenture glider is this piece right here. And what it is, is it's a swing that you actually stand on. So it'll support two, maybe three kids. And it, it's something where the kids act, there's some rails for kids to hold on to. And it's just a very appropriate event, especially for us in Colorado, where we're, you know, we're raising skiers or snowboarders, you know? So kids can stand on this event and just kind of feel like they're soaring through the air. And also there's an opportunity for them to kind of hold the rails behind them where they're just like swinging up and looking right up into the, into the sky. It's just a really neat event. The zip line is tucked back here. Super excited. We included that with our initial proposal. You know, it just, what's, what's great is with playgrounds, it, it requires a lot of space. Each play event is going to have a, a use zone or a fall zone outside of it. So really, we're trying to make our best use of your space and provide you the most play value. And not all play spaces allow us the opportunity to include a zip line. This adventure duo, it, kids can start at either end. So we're not going to have like just line, one line of kids on one end. They can actually start on either side and you still get enough run to keep it going where you can, you know, actually go to one side and still make it back. There's swings on both sides, both play areas with shade over them. Each side does have an ADA swing seat for a child that can't support themselves in a typical belt seat. And the product through Burke, it has a, you know, kind of a buckle that holds them in on the front end, a plastic form. And it, it's not something that's going to like fall back down on the kids. It's engineered where the parent or caregiver raises it, it's going to support itself, hold up, allow the kid to get in there. Also, down here in the smaller swing set, we have a connection swing, which is a parent-child swing seat, where basically the parent will sit down. There's kind of a backrest support that goes behind the child. So they have that swinging experience, but they're looking eye to eye. There's kind of that attunement as they're, you know, playing together and just having a lot of fun. Really, I mean, the key features for me on, on both play structures, coming into the, the large play structure here, there's this unique welcome up here that says, you know, welcome to the community park playground. So it just gives you that, you know, sense of place, hey, you're here in Superior. To us, we see this as a destination playground. You know, there's a lot of programming at this park, but there's going to be people that travel to this park. We want to create moments where, you know, mom and dad are taking pictures of their kids enjoying this play space, recognizing Town of Superior, putting it up on Instagram. So that's going to happen. There's a communication board right here. As you come, and the communication board, what it is, is it's kind of a sign, not just sign language, but, but it's, it's a way of communication, helping kids identify, you know, this is that, and it's, I, I can show you a better image of it. There's ramped entries, so a child in a mobility device is able to move up this structure to quite an assortment of events. We have a rocker here, you know, as they get up the structure where they can kind of move back and forth while they're on the mobility device. They'll move through this. There's different play panels and events for that child. But, but the feature piece on this big, you know, and these towers are tall. So kids are gonna, you know, there's, and they can move between these towers. There's a rope tunnel and, but there's good visibility too in these evolution towers where we're not going to have concerns about, you know, children kind of hanging out. They're doing something they shouldn't be. The backend of these towers, there's a transparent screening where people, you know, are able to see up there. But the heights of these are, you know, there's sixteen feet off the surface. So the kids are going to catch some pretty sweet views, you know, around the town. But this piece here is our three sixty loop slide. And what's really neat about this, we have this on both the smaller play structure and the larger play structure. On the larger play structure, this slide has a ten foot height. So a child is in a mobility device, they're able to wheel up to the end of this slide, to this transfer platform here. Now, this three sixty, the loop climber here, it's kind of like a rubber mining belt material. And there's a couple of different handholds on here where a child and, you know, that doesn't have lower body mobility, they can actually move themselves up that, that ramp to get to this first six foot deck here. And then there's another one of these climbers to get up to this ten foot deck. So a child in a wheelchair can actually get up to a ten foot slide on their own. They can go down this thing. And instead of mom or dad waiting at the bottom with their wheelchair or to pick them up and, you know, take them back onto it, they can, they can just transfer over, slide their butt over here and do it again. So that's pretty exciting. One thing we really excel at with Burke is linked climbers, linked events. So all around this structure, there's, you know, just different climbers and step pods and little balance pieces where kids can kind of play, you know, floor is lava, work themselves around. It, you know, just a big assortment of, these are big slides. They're thirty inch diameter where me or Mayor Proterm could go up top and slide down them. But yeah, just, I mean, I, I could go on. There's just a, a ton of, oh, another kind of just event I'd like to point out is this Nido spinner here. This is another piece that, it can either be a motion event or also just a chill spot where a child in a mobility device can transfer. The platform on this spinner is at wheelchair accessible height where they can transfer in there. There's a support inside to support their back and it's a spinner. As long as somebody can move them around, they can spin, two kids can fit in there. It's also a chill spot. Do you have any specific questions?
No, but I, I, I love it. Well, one question I have, first off, thank you, both Jordan and Josh, for this presentation. It's really thoughtful. And I think that this is just going to be spectacular when it, when it's installed. And we've got an aging playground that, that needs to be replaced. And this is exactly what the voters authorize when they authorize the sales tax to, to fund these types of improvements. So one, one question that I had, just in terms of the maintenance of, of this space is, inevitably, somebody's going to tag it, right, some graffiti or something like that. How, how does this equipment hold up in terms of cleaning it, avoiding, you know, somebody with a Sharpie, spray paint, something like that?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, some of those events are, you know, unavoidable. I feel like what's unique to this park is there is a really strong public presence. You know, I've been here early in the morning or later in the evenings and having the picnic shelter and restrooms right there next door to it is great. It's going to encourage families to stay and play longer. But, so what you're also getting with what we're providing is also outstanding warranties. So the Surface America Rubber Port in Place Surfacing, it's the top warranty in rubber surfacing, which is seven years. So it, it is something that, basically, we're going to provide park staff with kind of a maintenance checklist. So like the fittings, the nuts and bolts and, and items on the play equipment, you know, that needs to be checked, you know, like kind of different intervals depending on the equipment. And if it comes to, I mean, I mean, because we've, like, we've done plenty of parks in Arvada where a lot of them are like tucked away, like in neighborhoods hidden behind trees. And we'll find, you know, spray paint graffiti or Sharpies. We do have graffiti remover that's kind of, you know, really works on everything. The only areas where we, you know, like really have issues is if, like a play panel, it's like a queer play panel and kids like scratch into it. You know, that's something where, you know, just unfortunately, like a new replacement piece. If it's vandalism, you know, it, it, it does cost to have that replaced. But otherwise, I mean, it's a fifteen year warranty really on most components here. So I mean, fourteen and a half years down the road, if like one of these slides were to crack, your park's maintenance staff would send us photos and we'd send out a new slide. And Burke's just great and easy to work with.
And so relatedly, like, so we had an issue, I don't know, maybe four or five years ago, where some kids like lit one of the slides on fire and burnt and like melted the plastic. So, you know, you needed to replace- That was Community Park, right? Yeah. So we had to replace that slide. So, you know, obviously this looks all very beautiful and custom, but, you know, in the event that something like that happens ten years down the road and we needed to, you know, find some sort of replacement, is that something that, that, you know, Burke foresees? And they have, you know, kind of like interchangeable type parts? Like, how would, how would we address a situation like that?
No, that's, that's a good question. Really, I mean, a lot of the, there's a lot of new items on this playground or newer items, you know? Like, these are newer styles where Burke has phased out the ugly babies. Kind of like our older, our, our older play lines where Burke's really grown in the last ten years, where Burke is almost an innovator in a lot of engineering and design. And a lot of these components are very unique. So, I mean, I, I'm not going anywhere. A to Z is going to be around. Burke, you're going to have, like I said, Burke is easy to work with. So really, I, I mean, a lot of these components are going to be available if, yeah, ten years down the road, something needs to be replaced. Or, or I guess where we have run into something where like an older product line that's been phased out, if, you know, like that slide's, you know, been broken or whatever, we try to find some equal to it, you know, it's a newer model. But there's, I don't know that we've run into anything where, you know, we just can't find a solution at all to make something work on a Burke playground.
Yeah. Hopefully it's not an issue and we don't have to worry about it, but.
The, I had a question about the, it's not really the playground equipment, but the bike rack that's currently right in the middle between the two parks. Will that, maybe this is a Jordan question, but will that stay? And will there be any more added? There's, sometimes there's a lot of bikes there. So I don't, is there any conversation about more?
It will stay. I, we didn't really talk about more as part of this project. It's not really in the budget for this project. Sorry.
That's okay. And I, I do just want to say thanks. I believe my own child held you hostage for at least a half an hour telling you everything she wanted to see. So I'm very excited to share this with her. So thanks.
She's a very talented playground designer. And we, we did get her scavenger hunt in here. So, yeah.
Were there any other changes that were made to the design after the public feedback?
Sure. So first off, kudos to your parks team. They held a very robust public engagement process with, you know, the various sessions. I mean, that's something that we've played a role in in the past, but they really did a wonderful job. Yeah, so, so we did have, you know, a couple revisions that we worked through and it was just, just making little changes on the equipment. We changed the orientation up a bit on the, on the smaller playground. We, oh yeah, the hide, the scoundrel hunt, the hide and seek panel was added. And what that is, is you kind of, you, you spin a wheel and throughout the playground, there's, there's six little circular shapes, you know, that the kids got to, you know, kind of try and find. So yeah, there are, you know, a couple swaps that we made through a couple of the different revisions that we worked through. And it was mostly orientation and just really, really kind of smaller changes to the equipment.
All right.
I got a quick question, kind of going back to what Mark was asking about. You know, we, we had another slide over in Founders where the slide broke and it took a few months to get a replacement part. So it sounds great. You've got parts, but a lot of this looks like it's manufactured in China. So what's the lead time? Like if somebody broke one of our slides and you didn't have it in the warehouse, like what's the lead time to get a, a replacement piece?
Sure. Okay, so all the Burke equipment is manufactured up in Fond du Lac, Wisconsin.
Oh, okay.
It's all American made. One of Burke's advantages is lead times. So, and Burke is an independent company, hundred and five years in business now. So, so yes, say you had a slide crack, you emailed me today about it. I mean, we would, we actually have a person within A to Z that, you know, works on parts replacements and the warranty type of items. She goes to Burke. And, you know, and then Burke looks into it. It, you know, may take a couple days. And then typically, I mean, a lot of this, like this playground is made to order. So they're not like, like it's all welded up there. It's powder coated up there. These are specific colors that we work through. So it, it depends. Like, like that slide could be in stock and it could be, you know, here to us within two weeks. But I would typically say- here to us within two weeks, but I would typically say we would handle warranty replacement within four weeks.
Okay, I know the Founders Playground one took, took a while and the whole time, you know, there's a lot of kids staring at it, you know, and it's, we just get a lot of emails like, why isn't it fixed? Like, well, the parts are a million miles away, so that's refreshing. I didn't realize that they're, they're domestic, so that's, that's helpful. Thank you.
Any additional questions for staff?
It's not really a question, but just something I wanted to bring up for council and maybe something we can budget for. So on the smaller playground, I had mentioned that some from Park had wanted to have a fenced-in area specifically for children on the spectrum because when they're younger, and it doesn't apply as much to the older playground because it sounds like they age out or find ways to manage that, but when they're younger, it's a bit more of an issue. And so trying to have a fence around that smaller area so that parents, especially if they have more than one child, they don't have to be so frantic in trying to keep an eye on that child because it sounds like sometimes it can preclude them from using the park at all because it's just too much, you know, anxiety around, you know, whether or not, you know, you turn your head for a second and the child takes off. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Leslie, but I think that it was about $15,000 or so. So if there's a way for us to work that into the budget somehow so that that could be included or maybe there's grant funding around that, so maybe something we could look into for, you know, neurodivergent or children on the spectrum to be able to have a safe place to play, that would be helpful.
Did Park consider a fence?
Yes, so this did come up in the Park Committee meeting, well, actually, I think two different Park Committee meetings. And so we did look into, we got a, I think, a couple quotes on a couple different types of fences that would really go around like three sides of the smaller playground to the west. So I think the 15,000 was like just the fence with none of the landscaping that would be required, you know, around the fence. So that is another consideration, but we did check with A to Z on this. They don't really do fencing except for kind of these pretty fancy like fence panels that are very colorful and expensive. And we, you know, we kind of talked about the possibility of getting that into the budget and kind of what we figured out is that we would lose kind of some significant play equipment if we were to do that as part of this project. So does that answer your question?
It does, yeah. It was more just getting it on everybody's radar for, because obviously we don't want to lose, you know, the great play features that are here. So just maybe something we could look at for a near budget.
A future project, maybe, yeah.
Please.
All right. Any additional questions? Well, I'm really excited here. I mean, I think that we've got, I think the accessibility issues that we have currently with Community Park are addressing an unmet need. So that's great with the ramped entry and the port in place. I think it's just going to be a wonderful addition. I think the shades, huge, huge improvement over what we have currently. And, and this just looks like a ton of fun. I'm kind of sad that my kids are too old really to enjoy it, but, I mean, they'll probably go down there, but they just won't let me come with them. But it's going to be a really a great community asset. And I agree with you, Josh, that I think people are going to be, this will be a destination. People will be traveling from all over the place to come to this park because it's so nice. So fully supportive.
I just want to say thank you for all the public engagement on this. I was at the Fourth of July event and the kids lined up to write, handwrite their comments was probably the cutest thing on planet Earth. It was quite adorable. So just want to say thank you for all the opportunity for the community pride and put in. I think this looks amazing.
Thank you and thank you for your help at that event.
So in terms of action from us, we don't have a resolution or anything like that. This is just thumbs up direction? Motion to approve the final design? All right. I'll make a motion to approve the final design unless there's anything further that people want to say. Got a motion from Mayor Laces, a second from Councilmember Miller. Do a roll call vote.
Mayor Laces?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Serbu?
Yes.
Councilmember, sorry, Craycraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowish?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
All right, passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing this in the spring.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Let us know when the ribbon cutting is.
Will do.
All right. I want to be first on the slide. Oh, 100%. Yeah, yeah. All right, we're adjourned.